All right. All right, I'm gonna call the town council. Work session for August thirteenth, Tuesday to order. We'll start with planning commission decisions. Anything to comment on? All right, into legislative review Summit Combined Housing Authority, IGA revision.
So Mayor and Council, you have a memo in the packet that describes the changes to the combined housing authority. IGA and what spurred this is the inclusion of the Town of Keystone. In SCHA and so the amendment adds them to the IGA. It charges them ninety thousand dollars, which is the amount that all the other entities paid in for the building that the housing authority is currently in in Frisco. And then it changes the allocations that we all pay in to accommodate the entry of Keystone. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Thanks Shannon, any questions for? Staff on this?
Glad to have you.
Okay.
One question for the future, not to get into now, but at some point will we have a work session on the Summit Combined Housing Authority and their role and is that coming up soon?
It is, so it's on the agenda now for September twenty fourth, I think is the date, but yeah, the second meeting in September.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah.
We'll get Chloe back.
All right, thank you very much, the intergovernmental agreement with Town of Blue River and Summit County. Welcome Duke.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yep, so you have in your packet a memo requesting to approve a IGA. A resolution to enter an IGA with. And Summit County and the purpose for that is. To secure legal public access to the Blue River Trail, that's the main reason and that is a. Trail that's more than four miles long and goes from essentially Wakefield to Fredonia. And it's a USFS Forest Service System Trail. But it, there are private property challenges with it and so. Entering into this agreement would help with those challenges and preserve that access. And the trail, you know, connects to communities, Blue River and Breckenridge, key recreation. And. Also, we'd want to preserve this or. You know, enter into this to preserve the open space and wildlife habitat and it's. It's public land adjacent, so it's not like it's an island of open space. We have ground truthed it and feel like this agreement protects the trail location and easement where we'd want it to be. And. As outlined in the IGA. Any signage and trail construction and trail maintenance going forward with that seventy percent fifteen percent fifteen percent arrangement would carry forward with Blue River and Summit County. The eighty two thousand five hundred dollars that that it would cost us would come out of our open space fund. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
On the subject.
So with this arrangement originally, if we were to go into thirds with the county and Blue River and the Town of Breck. We were to put an easement on it, flip it and put it back on the market. Under this configuration, Blue River wants to hold on to it, correct?
Yes, yeah, this is actually they subdivided this lot and this is a three acre parcel that we're purchasing and. One acre that the homeowner has their their house on and so this is now being preserved as open space. And yeah, you know, another reason is just partnering with Blue River and they're. Building open space program and moving forward with that, you know, there'll be future opportunities hopefully.
And there'll be open access, obviously.
Yes, yep, and that's outlined in the IGA as well, preserve that.
Thanks Duke.
The trail alignment gets sorted out on that lower part there to where it's kind of more in the flume?
Yes, yep, yep, we talked with Michelle Eddy about that and she's been, she's the Blue River Town Manager. And everybody feels good about being able to run the trail. Right on the edge of the flume like when we walked it.
Got it, so it's better than it was with that?
Yeah, it was actually re-surveyed and. Yep.
Cool, so they fixed that?
It's yes.
Awesome, no, that's super and that's wonderful to kind of get in that relationship going with the Town of Blue River to, yeah, have public access and please let them know we're really appreciative of that.
Thanks Todd.
Good step for us with Blue River.
Right.
All right, anything else? Thanks Duke.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's how all the kids walk to their dance recital when they, when the road was closed. Density transferred to Stables Village, Mark.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The resolution in front of you. For this evening's approval would. Per the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan is along with the town code. Were required to transfer density to our workforce housing projects at a one to one ratio and so that's what this would do, it would. Take density off of the F lot, first time we've kind of tapped that resource, if you will, but there's quite a bit of density on it. And move the density necessary. Or essentially extinguish that density off of the F lot through a restrictive covenant. And then that would account for the new density being created out at Stables Village that's currently, as you know, under construction. There's one thing I wanted to note is I've gone through here and made some minor revisions. Kelly passed along the question about if there was any existing density sitting on the Stables Lot. Now, and yes, there is, and that's something I missed in this whole discussion. It seems like every density transfer we've done recently on block eleven and. Zero density existing, we had to transfer it all, there's a very small amount of density. Point five eight acres and that's because the two land use designations for that. Were allowed one unit per twenty acres, one unit per ten acres. When you do the math on the eight acres, it ends up being about point five eight acres that was existing. So I've subtracted that out from the amount of density we need to transfer from F lot, so it's a slightly smaller number. Sixty one point six five units or SFPs is what needs to be transferred. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thanks Mark. Questions for Mark? All right.
Thank you.
Looks great. Okay, going into the manager's report, public projects update, Shannon. Coming down.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I do have an update on a project that's not in the memo. Excited. On Thursday up at the Goose Pester Tarn Dam, we need to conduct a test of the low level outlet works, we have to check a valve. See how that's functioning as part of the warranty. So we will be reducing flows for a very brief period of time. It will be noticeable in town, once we do that. We think we're going to conduct the test around ten AM, somewhere between ten and eleven, about thirty minutes later, we'll see the flows drop through town. We want to give everyone a heads up that that's happening.
For how long?
Hopefully only about ten minutes, ten fifteen minutes.
Interesting.
Thursday. Thursday late morning, so if you hear anything, get any calls, that's what's going on in. I'm sure that's happening. Other than that, I did give an update. In the memo on the Blue River, the rebuild north of Coin. So we're going to mobilize the construction crew out there to do some minor repairs. The river did great, it did what we wanted it to do during high flows, but there are a few areas where we want to go in and reestablish the banks. So that the river doesn't take such a shortcut moving forward. So we'll see that they think it's about a week's worth of work and somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. And we did retain money in that budget for these type of repairs, whether it be the landscaping or the bank work.
So no new money is required, it's, okay. Questions for Shannon on any other projects?
Shannon, on the McCain Access Road. I've had a bunch of comments saying that the disruption has been more than. Maybe anticipated, when you, when you see all the machinery off towards the west of the road.
Okay.
Is, is there more going on with drainage or like what is, what is the need for the widened disturbance area?
Okay, the disturbance area, so much of what you see out there disturbed is the snow storage area. That might be what someone up in Silver Shekel can probably see. So we graded the snow storage area, added in water quality ponds and swales. So that is likely the extra that they're seeing, we will be coming in there and reseeding it this fall.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So you graded it just so that it was flatter and then, and it drained the correct direction? And then we're, but it's not going to stay, it'll be grassy-ish.
We're going to seed it and then that'll continue to be a challenge with the snow storage.
Right.
I mean, a lot of sediment comes out of those snow storage piles, a lot of trash. That's why those water quality ponds are super important, but we hope we can establish some vegetation up there in long term.
I didn't remember making a final decision to, I thought we were. When we, I know we talked a lot about this, but when we made final decisions on that. Master plan a year or two years ago, I thought the snow storage was going to go on the west of the road. And I know we're talking about moving it to the east, but to me that was just discussion, there were no final decisions made.
So the current McCain master plan has snow storage on both the east and west sides of the road to get us to our fourteen or fifteen acres. Majority of it is on the west side, right adjacent to the school. And then a smaller portion that's labeled public works, storage, you know. Commercial leases and that is on the east side. So you can probably see both of those areas, but the larger segment is on the west and that's where we're going to be stacking snow this winter.
And that was always that way?
Yeah, we're following the master plan and you know, it's time sensitive due to the housing coming in with the runway. We will still utilize a portion of Airport Road Block Eleven this year. But this will be the last winter where we really have an opportunity to do a bulk of our snow storage there, so we'll have to move it over to McCain.
Okay.
I think it's this section that's already dis.
I think we shared out recently to you, the McCain master plan, it's the, I think it's a red boxes on there, that's the snow storage. And that's what we've been working off of.
Okay, I've just seen a lot of different versions. And I guess I didn't know we'd made any final decisions to change the old version.
Old being.
Yeah, good question. It was the last council that, that really finalized the last master plan, we've talked a lot about it, but we haven't finalized it yet.
It was in twenty two, I think, looking back through our emails, but could we be sent, I don't think we had it in our last packet, the most recent McCain master plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, the one from twenty twenty two.
I think it's the third amendment might be the way it's titled. We will get that third amendment out to everybody, so we're all on the same page.
All right, any other questions for Shannon?
I have one.
Yep, go ahead.
Shannon, during the course of the interest in the McCain property for possible ski parking. There were some written comments which were. Critical of the overflow of the river. And whether that might impact the ski parking, I don't know if you read all the, we got a lot of comments. But I, I would suggest that if anybody notices the work being done on the river, which with the. Enhanced interest in that area from the ski parking. You could offer up. Some conversation about how well the river did work and that this work. Is just making it even better and that it really performed exactly like it was and it wasn't a flood created by the work on the river.
Not at all, yeah.
There were people that had that opinion.
Thanks for that heads up and we'll try to push some outreach on that. Really explaining what we're doing and promoting how the river is functioning as intended and we're just doing some real minor. Minor bank work and.
With the scary issue, people are really looking, watching down there.
Yeah, it's, there's some nice views of McCain now from that new trail, Ellie's features as well, I was up there and could really see what was going on, so. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people observing it.
All right, thank you Shannon.
Thank you.
Matt Mobility?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, one quick update in addition to what's in your packet. With the long lead times of new buses that we have on order. The first two slated to be here next spring. Judd and Andy have been working with some of our partners around the state and. We got a really good deal on three Town of Vale buses that they were sending to auction here in the coming weeks. They're a little bit larger buses, forty foot, but they're still Gillig, the same platform that we utilize here. And we have purchased them for fifteen hundred dollars each. And we are outfitting them with our livery, so they'll look like the free ride buses, we won't really know a difference, they're just five feet longer. We are picking them up tomorrow and we're going to get them wrapped next week and hopefully have them in service by early September. They are pretty unique buses and that they are longer than we typically use here, so we won't be able to use them on every route. We are going to do some testing later this week, so you might see them out there trying to make some turns around town, not getting stuck or crashing, but. We're going to be doing that here and just see where we can. Use the buses, but they are a really good kind of stopgap where we want to keep running the service that we have and you know, getting close to a million riders. We want to keep providing the service that we are for the community. And with the issues we're having with the Phoenix formerly Proterra buses, we just want to kind of hold ourselves over for the next few months, so. Just wanted to give you an update on that and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Matt, is there an update on those buses, the Phoenix?
Not anything really official, we have been talking to CDOT. They were very impressed with the information that we have on these buses and all the work that we've done to try to rectify the issue. They've passed it up to the FTA as well as. Through Phoenix, their new leadership and they're trying to figure out what the next steps are, so right now, no update. We do have one in service right now and one of them is being repaired and we believe we'll be back in service within the next week, but our three newest ones are still down.
Fifteen hundred dollars a bus?
That's correct, yeah, yeah, forty five hundred dollars total, those buses new were about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
And are these the hybrids?
That's probably the one downside, but in reality, it's a, it's a very good bus, it's just like the Gilligs that we have that are not the hybrids, they're a straight diesel, but they are a good bus.
Understood.
I just want to confirm, Matt, we know we can use them on some routes.
Yeah, yes, we can use them on the green route for sure and then when we switch over to our brown and yellow routes, it works just fine on the yellow route, so. And we know we can use them and we'll use it right away on the green route, which will kind of give us a trolley back, so you won't see the trolley floating around all over town.
One other question, the numbers on the E Ride are just spectacular and just all the kudos in the world to all the staff that. Has worked on that. It's fantastic. As we go into talking about budgets and, and, and finite resources. At what point would you say that the law of dimension returns goes into effect with how many bikes? Do we not gain more rides and like when we're looking at how much to. To put into and to fund this project that's been so great and the pilot programs work so incredible. At what point do you see how many bikes is like, all right, at that.
Saturation, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that we have the exact number and that's kind of why we're being so diligent and Teddy's welcome to step in as well. So diligent in how we kind of roll this out. I would say we are looking at a grant that could help fund us further for the next few years as well, so. While I wouldn't say we're just going to throw more bikes out there, we're doing it very diligently and getting feedback from the community on that, but Teddy, what, what else?
We are planning to come, come back to council in the fall with a kind of short list of proposed expansion hubs, I do think that there is still plenty of room for growth. Adding additional hub locations and bikes into the program, but you are right, eventually we will. Get to a saturation point where it's kind of, we've hit our mark, but I don't think we're there yet. Quite have an exact number for you, other than right now, we're kind of looking at. Proposing or asking you all for, you know, five to six expansion hub locations for next year. And then we, whenever we add additional locations, we also need to add bikes as well, so that they're not spread too thin and we have too many empty hubs, so. The number of bikes is kind of a function of the number of hub locations that we want to have.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you so much and fantastic job on it.
Yeah.
Thank you guys. Sustainability?
All right, I changed seats, so now I'm wearing my sustainability hat. Mostly just updates in your memo, the two things I think we just wanted to bring up was, we had a follow up on. Council's request to look at what can be done for improving heat tape efficiency. And on that, we just wanted to flag that, you know, heat tape was as part of the RIMP process, we include it in the calculator, so. The homeowner does see the cost. Of the heat tape and what it would cost to mitigate that, but right now there's no fee associated with it. And that was part of the stakeholder process and the recommendation from builders at the time. To not, not pursue that and then, you know, the other option is we have the energy smart program and we could look at rebating timers and controls for heat tapes through that program. So that was that and then the other thing was just to follow up on our bike friendly community certification. Last fall, we recertified and we got the official notice earlier this year that we were. Certified at the gold level for, as a bike friendly community and they just got the. Report card for that over to us, so that's included in your packet and if there's. Any items related to that that you'd like to discuss, then we're all yours.
Brief questions?
Great. So I think I was. The one that brought up like kind of the thermostat to the timers for the heat tape and after reading your, your great memo. I made some phone calls, some roofers and some gutter installers and, and there seems to be a lot of. Ambiguity on what the best methods are when it comes to heat tape. And you know, there was one of everyone I talked to, there was one thing that became apparent, which I thought was kind of great timing is. Architectural design has the biggest impact on how much heat tape you need and how much, how often it has to be on. And you know, if you have a flat roof, you need a ton of heat tape and it needs to be on twenty four hours a day in order to keep those gutters running. Versus pitch roofs with less dormers, they need less heat tape and, and the other thing that I found that was interesting was that. You know, while some people said you should have it, you know, you can do twelve on and twelve off, that they disagreed on what twelve to have on and what twelve to have off and whether it's best to have it on. During the day when it's the warmest or it's best to have it on at night when it's the coldest. And, and what happens if you don't have it on for twelve hours and how hard it has to work, it was just, I found it very kind of interesting on how it all works out and. Other than architectural design, the other biggest factor was. How old the heat tape is and whether the newer heat tape definitely does have some sensor controls to it. And I was just curious if there was any thoughts that could kind of go back and sustainability means going, okay, you know, with. There appears to be a lot of disagreement on it of what other methodologies can we, if we don't have a hundred percent agreement on. When it should be off and when it should be on, what other ways can we go about helping this? And can we incentivize maybe changing out, getting newer heat tape or, or how that goes and I just, I was curious just to see what your thoughts were and. Where we can take this discussion that will actually have a impact on, on the sustainability.
Yeah, I would have to also do a little more research, again, I've kind of heard conflicting things, I, I think. The, what we put in the memo, our understanding was six AM to six PM as being the best time during the daylight. Hours, but I do know there's a lot of differing opinions within the trades on, on best practices and even new emerging technology. In terms of new kind of camera systems that can be installed with these that help with efficiency. But I think we probably just need to do a little more work within the trades to build a little more consensus on the best practices around it.
And on the bike friendly, I really, I saw that and I think I want to just mention Mike McCormick and you know, when you look at the. Six point eight percent male commuters versus zero percent women and seeing what Mike's doing out there right now of embracing the, the. Women and the ridership and the, and the demos, I just think that that's, that's a place that we can do better and that that should be a priority. When it comes to the bike friendly input. The other one that was the advisory committee, the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee that Dick and I were even talking this morning that. You know, with the interest in the open space and outdoors and trails that. This could be a committee that would garner a lot of attention and be kind of a good one to be a feeder program.
Just a couple of things, because we did get some questions, the recycling code reference in the memo really just refers to recycling. Rules and guidelines and what you can put in recycling, not an actual code. And. The other question was.
Glass.
Glass.
Yeah, the, just. The reason why we can't do glass in the single stream or don't do glasses, it does break down into tiny little shards that then gets lodged into the. The plastic and paper materials that are also in there and contaminates those streams. And then also we are really lucky in that we have the Rocky Mountain bottling facility right down the street in Golden that. Can do bottled, bottled recycling, so if we have a really nice clean stream of glass, they can take that. They pay a little bit higher for the, you know, it being a clean stream and then they turn that into new bottles with Miller Coors.
That was my question and I really just asked it because I want that information to get out. Because I think it's an awesome. I think it's the right thing to do, you know, not to downgrade all of our recycling by letting glass shards get in it, but I wonder if we can. Maybe work with Brooke and the communications team to sort of put out that information, because it's just a really, it. Like I think a lot of people think, when are we going to be able to put glass in our single stream? But to me, I hope never, because really that just means we're downgrading all of our recycle, which I feel like that message needs to. Go out a little bit more, so maybe you can help them, because it's kind of a complicated message, but.
And the High Country Conservation Center does have a campaign currently. On radio, social and I think some other platforms even print promoting kind of like keeping glass out of single stream and why. So we can maybe work with them on, you know, promoting that material and.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's currently active.
Okay, thank you.
And then Hayden, could you just give a real brief description of what you're doing for plastics enforcement?
Of course, yeah, so plastics enforcement has been ongoing, I've been working with the High Country Conservation Center, we've been doing site visits weekly. And now kind of biweekly, but we've. Gone into almost every food service business in town and spoken with different staff members. Regarding the ordinance and addressing any plastics that they do have. I'm continuously kind of sending, you know, emails and outreach as well and doing kind of one-on-one technical assistance with businesses. If a business does have singly used plastic, that's not allowed per the ordinance, I'm working with them on an ongoing kind of process. If a business does have singly used plastic, that's not allowed per the ordinance, I'm working with them on an ongoing kind of process, whether it's helping them find the alternative, making sure that they're ordering it, you know, kind of follow up. And then also troubleshooting with them on what products they use, you know, for whatever they offer for sale. Some businesses, it's a little trickier than others, depending on what they're selling. So it's been just kind of one-on-one technical assistance, but it's ongoing. So I do issue warnings to businesses that are, I know are aware of the ordinance and that have continued to use products. But no citations or fines have been issued at this time, so.
Thanks, Hayden. Um, Hayden question on Universal URO. I've had a couple community members that live in neighborhoods with shared enclosures and they're wondering when that will happen. Can you remind us the compliance state? And then it's up to the HOA, so I should tell them to talk to their HOA when that'll be happening.
Yeah, so the ordinance sets it kind of by the, the hauler almost. So we had it as June of 2024, where we had 50% of the haulers' customers had recycling added to their services for any shared enclosures and commercial accounts. And then June of 2025 is when we're looking at that 100% compliance. So we are working with the haulers and then as well as the HOAs, the property management companies, where we're doing site visits to address that issue. And, and it really is the resident, you know, talking with their HOA, getting a site visit scheduled with us, where we can then discuss what needs to happen for them to become compliant.
Okay, and have we met that 50%?
Yes, I believe so. I've been working on getting data from the haulers, which has been challenging. But whenever I speak with them, you know, it sounds like we've hit about the 50% mark for most commercial properties. I think the, the biggest challenge is some of these properties are looking at expanding enclosures, you know, a lot of work that goes into it before they can offer recycling. And I think a big part of it is, you know, they're planning budgets and everything. So they're going to be looking at the June 2025 date and then possibly the variances if their planning goes, you know, beyond that, so.
Okay, great. And then finally, just on the bike friendly community, yeah, and helping us get that gold. I know our lowest marks were in equity and accessibility, but I just wanted to confirm, I think it was mentioned in those bullets of what we can do. Are we going to try and get on, meet with the social equity committee with four to further vet those areas where we're lacking? Because it seems like that were, those were the areas where we were falling behind.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's an opportunity there with the Blue River Pathways Master Planning Process on getting feedback from the Social Equity Committee on, on that. And then, you know, another option is after that master plan is complete, then zooming out and looking at the rest of the community outside of that kind of limited scope area of the Blue River Pathways Plan and kind of figuring out the plan for the rest of town as well.
Thank you.
You guys have a lot going on.
Thank you very much.
Right, so as far as the housing update, we're going to have a pretty big housing meeting next meeting. So we might have just something very brief, but really just if there's questions.
Yeah, so really we had the, the notes from the last work group meeting in the packet, but we don't want to get into a lot of what was in there since you are going to have that more robust discussion at the next meeting. So it's really just for your information on, you know, as far as what happened at that meeting.
Okay, so keep those questions fresh in your mind for, in a couple of weeks. And then there's no open space update right now. The committee reports, we had one from the stage. Probably no questions on that. And the grants update, Shannon, just the memo today?
Just the memo, if you have any questions, let us know and we'll get answers for you.
A couple good ones. Aubrey's, yep, and all the teams out there. No, I don't think there's questions.
I had one.
I'm so sorry, go ahead, Dick.
I was just curious if Aubrey or you could expand on what the FTA is looking for on that Breck Transit Center fund? Because I think we've been, that's not the first time we've been denied on that grant. And I'm just curious, what, what do we have to do to fit in their parameters?
So each year we do a debrief and then think we're addressing their concerns in the next application. But we do have a meeting coming up, I think it's September 2nd, to do a deep brief and get feedback on our most recent application. This time we thought we were going into it, you know, really well. We worked with CDOT very early on in the process and had their guidance through the application. I think it's just a matter of who we're competing against. It's federal rather than state, so it's a much larger pool. And there are more disadvantaged communities that I think the funding goes to, but we are still doing the debriefs and we're going to keep trying, so.
So much, I appreciate that.
Yep, anything else?
Thank you, Aubrey.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thanks.
John, Breck events? Look at you, moving so.
Promised tap dancing. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Just quick brief update about public projects that wasn't said. The North Field turf has been completed. We had a youth softball camp out there last week. Some youth baseball had a coaches clinic over the weekend and early returns are awesome and they're cranking away on the south field. And they know there's lots of user groups that are ready to use it this fall, so they're going to go as quick as they can. And let's hope we have a dryish August to help us get to the finish line. For, as far as the BEC is concerned, just, you know, Jay, I love how that you just mentioned McCormick and the Women Cycling Summit. And I listened to Sonia Looney, one of the pro women riders yesterday, talk about being a mom to a two and a four-year-old and just the barriers. And it's really cool. So we didn't know what to expect with this Breck Bike Week and just, it's nice to have that exposure within the town. I might ask if you guys have 45 minutes to spare, 10 minutes to spare in, in between your sessions. You can watch some carnage over at the Always Dredge Pond as, as people fall in this evening. But yeah, I know Biffa has an awesome slate upcoming here, starting kicking off on Friday with, I better put a skate park inside the Riverwalk, so it should be really, really neat stuff that is happening for that. And the BTO with Oktoberfest and they're using our cup this year for, so we'll have really nice sustainability output for, for that. And then we talked, I know we got in-depth a little bit about a Fourth of July option. So Marika and I are taking the lead of creating a subcommittee that will have action items at the end of next month. So that first weekend or that first meeting in October, we could just give you an update about what we're thinking for Fourth of July, 2025, which is a Friday.
And John, did you see that the ski area had that light they had, um, what do they call?
The drone.
The drone.
Yep, yeah, that was put on by the high school.
Very successful.
Yeah, so technology is always improving, so it's something that, that will be a big part of that discussion.
Cool.
Any other questions?
For John? Thank you very much. All right, Breck Film Annual Update. Gary, Cynthia, Matt Glasses here, all the big players. Biggest.
Congratulations, Bob. Thank you for having us. We, I know you've got a full schedule, so we'll rip through this. We'll have a handout to give you in just a moment. I wanted to tell you upfront that we had intended to have the current list of members of the board on the backside. And we have quite a few new members, but we did, we didn't get it there, so we'll get that to you another time. But Peter Ammons from Alpine Bank is on our board now, will be doing some of the presentation here with me. And, and then let's real quick, let's do the introduction. We got our entire staff is here. Dan Stryker, Kat Cook, Kat runs the Eclipse Theater, and Kate's here in the back. engine McNichols on the board, you know, Cynthia Gordon, our board president, the founder of the Breckenridge Film Festival, along with Mary Reinischek, Nate Glass, yep. And Peter and myself. With that, what happened, what did I do? Perfect, why don't you start?
Yep, so today, first of all, thanks mayor and council members for giving us some time. Today, we're going to provide some brief updates on Breck Film Festival, obviously that's coming up. The Eclipse Theater, the state of the industry for films, in particular theaters, and obviously the financial status of the organization. So starting quickly with the Breck Film Festival, that's coming up September 19th, which is Thursday. It runs through that Sunday, September 22nd. And some quick hits as far as bullet points for you. There were 600 films submitted for review this year. Eighty-six of those have been selected and we feel we have a very strong and diverse program for 2024. Couple of other inclusions that you may have heard of before, but I would like to, would like to approach again is the Girls in STEM Program. Last year was our largest, 40 girls attended that with nine mentors, visiting mentors. So that's a huge success. And this year, we're actually moving that screening to the Riverwalk Center. So that has been a very large success of this program. And this year also is the high school submission, sort of a competition between high school students directing and producing movies. And this year, we've had the highest submissions ever. So that I'm looking forward to, to viewing some of those. And then financially, as far as Breck Film Festival, I'm very happy to announce 2024 advanced ticket sales. Ticket pass sales are up more than triple than last year with 10,000, over $10,000 in sales as of yesterday, which is amazing. And as far as overall, what we've seen in the last few years, obviously 2023, we did see a post-COVID rebound, but the attendance was not nearly as high as 2019, pre-COVID. Hopefully that will, and the strong ticket sales seem to indicate we'll have a, a very big number here in 2024, which we're looking forward to. And then one other final thing regarding the Breck Film Festival is we want all of you to be there and to show up. So we'll be providing passes for you, so you all can attend. And that is the update for Breck Film. And now just move on to the Eclipse. The Eclipse Theater is somewhat, for some, for some folks, somewhat of an unknown, I feel. It was for me before I joined the board. Some people might think, you know, it's open two or three days a week. We were actually open 300 days last year, 300, which is for one full-time person and two part-timers. And then obviously a bunch of volunteers that help us out. So I think that's an amazing statistics that we have there. And we continue to show blockbusters like Barbie, Oppenheimer, Deadpool is showing right now, along with our specialty art house movies and then some throwbacks that they'll, that will show. So personally, since I've joined the board, I've seen two silent movies, a movie about a ballerina and her shoes called The Red Shoe. And my favorite one, obviously Christmas Vacation. Just needed to throw that in. Some other items, and this is important, is how do we support not just our community and our visitors, but how are we supporting other nonprofits? And we do that by partnering and collaborating with other nonprofits for screenings. And we've done it with Building Hope and other nonprofits. And to year-to-date, we've had 19 screenings for nonprofit organizations, which is really nice, because not only are we supporting the nonprofit, we're supporting their members and we're supporting the folks that work there. So that's something that I wasn't aware of when I first joined the board. And one of the things that I would like to know if I was sitting on your side would be, well, what's new or upcoming? And what is new is we've hired a, a marketing assistant, sort of a PR type of person who is helping us with social media. And I believe that has led to our increased sales for the early pass tickets being more than triple. We also have a new website that just went live, so if you do go out there, it may have some glitches here and there. But we do have a new updated website, which we are happy with.
I see Jay going right to the website, so lucky.
Why I mentioned glitches? And then the state of the industry, it's an awfully interesting industry. In 2023, movie theater ticket sales rebounded, but obviously not to the level of 2019, the pre-COVID. Bobby, Barbie and Oppenheimer were obviously the catalysts nationally and also for the Eclipse, because we showed them both. And for 2024 now, nationally, ticket sales are down about 20%. And on top of that, you have other items affecting the industry. That was like the post-COVID writer's strike, obviously streaming, more direct to streaming as far as new releases. All pose challenges for any theater, large or small. Locally, in Denver, it was in the paper that Landmark Theaters is in Denver's closing two venues. And I think that is sort of sad. And part of the reason why I joined the board was to, I like to make a difference. And I believe that we can continue to get back to the levels of pre-COVID and be successful. So that's why I'm here. I'm a, obviously a banker, so I love numbers, so I'll be watching closely. But I am pleased with what I've seen so far.
And quickly, I'll pick up from there. The, you know, I, I will just say upfront that I think, I, I don't think I know that the board and our staff have really matured as operators of your facility, of the Eclipse Theater. The first year of, you know, '21 was the first year, but we really didn't open until after the film festival that year. So it was just a couple of months of operations that year. '22 was, it was rough, but we were open and going and still feeling the COVID hangover and everything. But, but we're getting there. Last couple of years, I think we're doing a good job running things and I'll just throw that out to begin with. And just kind of to check in what, what's going on in the world, what, what are other theaters like ours doing across the country? The Lyric up in Fort Collins or the Boulder Theater in Boulder and other art house movie theaters across the country. We sent our staff to a thing called Art House Convergence, just to, are we on the cutting edge? Are we way behind the curve? Where are we? And I think real, real quick, we're doing things about right. Everybody is scrambling to put other things in besides movies into the theaters. You know, we had some comedy for a while and I'm not sure we're doing much of that again now. But we do, we partner with our other nonprofits, but there's lots of other things that people are trying to scramble to get to. And we're, we're right in the middle of that. So we're doing things right. As Peter said, I think we're right-sized, we're probably a little understaffed, to be honest. 300 days a year, if you just do the math, and if you take one day off a week, well, you're, you know, you can see where you're at. So I think we're doing good there in terms of our staff sizes. We're doing everything we can to not only raise new money, new sources of revenue, but also to cut costs. And we, oh, we do everything, for instance, like, you know, the distributors for a movie like Barbie, we probably paid 60 or 65% of the ticket price back to the, back to, that's how they make their money. So other movies though, you know, less than that 50, 55% of it goes back. But if you wait a week or two, you can get a lower rate. And we've been doing that even, knowing that our audience so far has been really loyal. And they would rather wait if they know it's coming, if they knew Deadpool and Wolverine were coming, like a lot of the guys at the Hearthston I see. They are happy not to go across the county to see it. So, so we're doing those kinds of things as well to, to, you know, to cut costs and to try to, you know, keep things under control. So I guess, you know, Mike, conclude this little part, I just wanted you to know that we're really serious about our partnership with the talent on this. And we're doing everything we can to both raise revenues and to cut costs and to get the very best films that we can. And we are getting all the blockbusters, sometimes a week or so after, but we're bringing them in. Okay, in front of you, you have the financials. And as I mentioned a moment ago, '21 was a real short, real year. Twenty-two, you see the revenue and expenses. Twenty-two, you see the revenue and expenses, we had a loss both twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-three is the Barbie, the Barbenheimer year. People came back and I was really encouraged, and I think people are beginning, they're definitely coming back to events, all kinds, including movie theaters, which are a little more crowded, a little more dense. So we actually had a very small break-even that year. And then this year, things have retrenched, people are kind of holding back again, partly because we don't have the same lineup of big, big blockbusters. Not only Barbie and Oppenheimer, but you remember it was probably the last of the Indiana Jones series. And then it was Tom Cruise, you know, jumping his motorcycle off the side of a mountain, and you know, that brought out a lot of people as well. But, so we had a good lineup last summer, things worked well. We've fallen back a little bit this year. Quickly, the, the Eclipse or the Breck Film, I guess, and you understand, Breck Film is the overarching kind of entity. You have both the festival and Eclipse under that. But we have invested a little over ninety thousand dollars into startup costs, getting things refreshed after being shut down for about a year, putting in the new signage out in the street and, and then the losses, we've got about ninety thousand dollars invested. Offset, thank you, by the town having two years of a thirty thousand dollar grant to The Eclipse, which has really offset some, well, a good chunk of that, ninety. We still have skin in the game, we meaning the Breck Film, but that's okay. We understand how things work and that's something we've, we're used to and we're going to be okay with. We will be coming back for our grants this year, I think they're due tomorrow, in fact. We will be submitting both for Breck Film, or I'm sorry, for the festival. Traditionally, have gotten a grant for the film festival, I hope we can get back to the previous levels this coming year. It's important, it's, it's an important grant for us for the festival. But, but the other part of our ask will be for The Eclipse, and that part is essential. We really need those dollars to help offset what's, what's going on right now in the industry and our, our falling just short of breaking even. I gotta tell you, we are optimistic. I think in a couple more years, I hope maybe even sooner, that we can break even here and make, maybe make some money out of the theater. It's just been a really rough start. You know, the, the lack of big movies this year, even though Wolverine and Deadpool are doing really well for us, there's not many more coming, although December looks good, there's a couple of big movies coming out then that'll help. So we will be submitting again for those two things. And, and I guess with that, we can just go right to any questions you might have.
Thank you, guys. Questions for Peter and Gary? What?
Great, you have no question?
I do have a question. I think you said it, but I can't remember, how many tickets did you sell? I know you said three times.
I just, I just have a dollar amount, I don't have the number. Yeah, they're discount pads.
But you're talking about for the film fest, right?
Yeah.
I'm just curious how many tickets, like for the, for movies, the whole, for Eclipse?
We could.
Sorry, I thought.
Do you have it?
Yeah, just give me one second.
Just like your mother.
Well, thank you, guys. I mean, I know that we're all very excited to have our local theater, and it's definitely a part of the fabric of this community, and we're glad that you guys stepped up to continue running it.
Let me just finish with that, we are really happy to be there. This is our theater home, we, we didn't have a home, we, we barely have an office, but that's okay, you gotta agree on it. But having the ability to run that theater is, means the world to us. It opens up all sorts of other possibilities, it's exposure, and as I said, it's our theater home, so thanks.
Yep, thanks for being good partners, yes. Great, thank you very much. All right, well, good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, all the board members, too. All right, next up, we have our second arts discussion, Breck Create Popular Music Discussion.
So, yeah, Mayor and Council, while Tamara and Dave, board members is coming down, and I'll have him introduce himself when I turn this over to them. I just want to do a quick introduction to this, because there's a lot packed into that memo, and we are tight on time. So you have the background of popular music in there, and then some information on the two thousand and nineteen in-house assessment that was done on popular music, as well as how that is being currently operated at the Riverwalk, and some of the challenges that have arisen over the last couple of years with the change in the music scene in Summit County and in Colorado in general. So certainly Tamara can answer any questions you might have on that. But ultimately, the BCA Board has asked for some council feedback on popular music and whether or not the council would be willing to provide a subsidy for a change in how popular music is provided, or probably not provided, but accessed for the Riverwalk Center. The model that, you know, Tamara's been using is just not bringing, it's not bringing in the revenue, it's not bringing in the kinds of acts that we need in order for that to be successful. So you have a few options in there, I think. Number one option, and this is within the questions at the end of the memo, is do you want to put a pause on popular music until the Arts and Culture Master Plan is complete? See what goals are set through that plan, see what the community is looking for, for popular music, and then make some decisions on how you want to go forward once you have that information. Or Tamara has provided three options. The first option, I think she, she has some concerns about how that would impact the dates that are available for the current partners who use the Riverwalk Center, because in order to get folks to come into the Riverwalk Center, they need to have some, some prime dates. The third option would involve a facility use agreement. That is similar to what the partners have now for the use of the Riverwalk Center. But this facility use agreement, in order to get the talent that we would need, would have to be a richer agreement than what the partner organizations currently have. So you see in there that, you know, Tamara was really concerned about what that would do to the relationship with the current partners. And then that middle option was the use of a talent buyer that had a subsidy of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. But even the research that Tamara has done, she feels like that could be successful in bringing the kind of acts that we need to the Riverwalk. So those are the options, hopefully, that's a brief overview. I think I had to hear Tamara describe it to me probably four times before I thought maybe I understood the difference between the options. But I, I also want to share with you that after hearing this conversation with the BCA Board and thinking about this more from the town's perspective, my recommendation to council would be to put a pause on popular music and wait until we have the Arts and Culture Master Plan back, so that you have some real data and information to make that decision on, and then you can really be educated on what you want to provide there. So I just, I wanted to give you that overview and my thoughts on it, and then I'll turn it over to Tamara and to council if you have any questions for her on this.
Shannon, when do we anticipate that report?
I think it's next year.
Yeah, so we have just engaged, well, we're in the contracting process of the Cultural Master Plan, and so we anticipate wrapping that up here in the next couple of weeks, and then having a kickoff at the end of September, which would involve a council presentation as well. And I certainly think that, you know, it's Breck Creates' desire to get that, that feedback as well. And so whatever is in here is this transition recommendation, a temporary recommendation, but we know we have to do something. And so I'm here for questions about community and strategy and history, and Dave Ratner is one of our newest board members, and he is the founding partner of Creative Law Network. So he is really the serving artists, musicians, venues, and has his finger on the pulse in terms of what's happening in the field and the industry. And so any kind of landscape questions, David's here to help address from like that external lens. So we wanted to get a little bit of direction from you in terms of our, our budgeting. In the first round of the town budget, we do have that option one. Our goal is not to just to maintain consistency as much as is possible without losing a ton of money or making big directional shifts before that Cultural Master Plan is finished. So, you know, community events are always first for us, they always have been. That puts some unique constraints on a more commercial approach to popular music in the Riverwalk Center. And so that, you know, we have come up with a variety of ways and deployed a variety of tactics and strategies to, to accommodate that first priority of being an open, community-first venue while still leveraging the market to the best of our ability to really provide things to do for patrons. And so to add a little color to those three options, you know, that first option is kind of puts us, keeps us in a holding pattern and as much as is possible until the outcomes of Cultural Master Plan. The second one is probably most closely aligned with your current community goals and would need further refinement in the budget process since that first one is, is in our current budget with the first round. And the last one is really kind of the best, most cost-effective way to animate the facility for visitors who are already here. But I think for us at Breck Create, you know, we're here to advise on what the, the optimal, most cost-effective model is based on the goals of the community, whether that be drive business or, you know, create a sense of pride and appreciate our local workforce or animate for visitors. And so we might adjust based on what those are, and we're kind of in this place where we're, we need to define those through the Cultural Master Plan. So that's kind of the nuts of it. Have anything you want to add or just take questions?
Thank you, you covered it pretty well.
We'll take questions.
Is there a date that we're going to see this Cultural Master Plan results?
A year from, I would anticipate a year from the end of September, so September two thousand and twenty-five.
And then there's another six months through a year for booking, I'm assuming, so we would go dark for two years?
I don't know if we'd go.
I mean, if that's.
Completely dark, but it would be, it would be about eighteen months of.
The lead time to book shows can be, yes, six months or a year, easy. If you, depending on how specific you are in your desires to get particular acts.
So for example, we do have a couple of shows confirmed in Q1 and even in the summer for next year already, and we're going to have to figure out how to make those work.
So can you talk a little bit about, in both Shannon's description and in this memo, it says that one, two, and three, the options might impact users, existing users? I'm figuring NRO and some, some of our other nonprofits, or who are we talking about?
Yeah, I think when you, so in order to minimize the cost to the town or minimize the subsidy required, what commercial promoters like to see is just how many dates do you have open so they can route their artists and kind of pick and choose which venues to optimize their touring route? So we wouldn't anticipate a huge departure from the norm, but the, the greater chance, particularly if we're not negotiating the other ways that they can make money, ticket service fees, bar, the other things that we are pretty locked in without change, you know, without compromising our priority with resident companies, would be dates and trying to make those available.
Okay, thanks.
Have you talked to Lucy of, under conclusion says a holistic approach around having the Tourism Office supporting the promotion of, of not only the Riverwalk Center, but also the Arts and Culture? Because that's a significant change for our charge of what we want the Tourism Office doing and
Yeah.
I'm on that board and haven't heard anything about that, so I just.
Yeah, we haven't talked specifically, I did share the memo with her in the draft version. I think that's something off, that a holistic approach, it's something that came up in our research when we were talking with commercial promoters. They were curious, they had seen a lot of Go Breck stuff and were curious about the strategy, because if they would be more interested, if there was, if that was a partner in the overall promotion, it doesn't have to be event-specific, but rather, you know, these are the beautiful assets we have, the room at the Riverwalk Center, the creative district. And so that was a piece of learning in the assessment and research that we had. I think we also, just the arts nonprofits, could benefit from a holistic approach as well.
I have serious concerns about that and would want to bet it with BTO Board and.
For sure.
With Lucy and the staff, it's, it has never been what the BTO has been charged to do. And the BTO is charged to, to market the brand and build the brand and to, to bring people here, not to drive specific elements of, of the brand, so. But that's another discussion, but that's a, that's a big red flag for me and a, and a concern.
Yeah, and I want to be specific, we're not talking about event-specific, but rather the brand of arts, culture, and music and popular entertainment and having that as an asset in Breckenridge as a part of the guest experience and the brand that we have. So it wasn't specific to event marketing that we were discussing.
Any other questions?
I just asked for clarification, Shannon, when you, under your recommendation, the, the recommendation that you, you made was to basically pause and not do any one, two, or three, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an option that was listed that staff was recommending.
Yep, that is what I was recommending. One, because we don't have the master plan back yet. And then two, because any of the, you know, any of the three options that provide music, they either impact partner organizations in some shape or form, existing special events in some shape or form, or there's the subsidy that goes along with them.
Wonderful, thank you for that clarification.
I'd add to that, because that is slightly different. I mean, what we could do is essentially not offer more dates to commercial promoters and do number one. So it might not be a total pause, I mean, we still want to stay in the game, out there in front of agents, promoters, and, and continue those relationships. But we could do that in a way that does not impact dates at all, which we don't anticipate it being a major impact anyway. Essentially, we want to make sure that there's some continuing thread throughout. But we can do that with the constraints that we currently have, there's just less likelihood that we would confirm a show.
So I'm confused then, that sounds like it's just maintaining status quo, what we're doing, what you're doing today, right? It's just like, continue planning around the partner orgs and continue working with a promoter, and when people can come, they do come.
That, there's a slight difference. So right now, we have an agreement with a talent buyer that we put on retainer and for a certain number of shows. And then any number of shows above and beyond that is a per-show fee. So this would be releasing that contract and then basically saying, here's the venue, here are, here's the rate card. We would essentially replicate what we do for resident companies, waive rent, maintain all the other standard rate, rate cards we have for our in-kind users, whether they be grantees. whether they be grantees, one-off nonprofits or resident company users and just say, here's the package, please use it and
So what's the negative?
For the best.
What's the negative of that?
I mean, basically because we have this current relationship with Z2, with this talent buyer, they are actively trying to bring shows to the room. And if we stop doing that, you're not going to have, people aren't really, there's so many people looking to bring in shows that people aren't going to be knocking on our door, hey, can we do a show with the Riverwalk? So if by, by releasing that agreement, we're probably not going to have popular music in the room very frequently.
But it wouldn't cost us anything.
Correct.
Is there value to you to have for us to pick one of these three options? Like option two or three specifically is kind of what I'm thinking about to, as we think about the, the arts plan and kind of the sentiment survey that we're doing with our community. Is there value to you in taking a year and trying one of these two to learn and seeing if, you know, does that help you out at all?
I think there's value in all three approaches because what we might learn from option one is that without a proactive, a proactive approach where we do negotiate all terms, we might not get anything and that would be data that we can confirm and bring back to council for consideration. For number two, I think, um, you know, we might, there's probably some work that we can do to see, okay, we'd need to take it a number, another step. Do you want to offer locals appreciation free events like some of the other municipalities within Summit County? Because we do think we might be able to get better talent or more relevant talent for, um, for free concerts because your agents are looking to plop in additional shows for additional fees that don't compromise the ticketed shows that they have along the I-70 corridor, corridor, Front Range, Red Rocks, Vale, Dillon, all the way out to, to Grand Junction. So there could be some val, there could be great value. It just needs to be subsidized because that's, you can see we would use to get acts like Grace Potter, but they are going to Copper because Copper is now u- using music as a strategy to drive business. I think the, the ski resort is going to do that to a certain extent too. And we're trying to see where that lands, but I think there's still, it's kind of, you know, information is slow to come. So, and it's hard to plan around it because we're, you know, sixteen, eighteen months out in advance. So it's a unknown of how that will play out.
The one thing that I would just ask council to consider, and Jay can speak on this. And what we've heard in the planning for the master plan is a feeling of inequity between some of the resident partners and the BCA and how the town interacts with those organizations. And so, um, I think this is one of the reasons why waiting for the results of the master plan without subsidizing further, I think is important because you have other entities that are providing their valuable assets to the community that are also looking at funding challenges. And so I think if we're trying to get hopefully with the, the master plan, some level of parity in how those organizations are treated by the town. And so that's one other thing I would just ask everyone to take into consideration when you're making this decision.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Shannon. And I am just going to say one step further is that Shannon has been sitting on the board and a part of all these discussions. And so I don't think we should take it lightly that her suggestion is that we take a pause. In addition, I do really feel strongly about not impacting other organizations that are using the Riverwalk. And so for, for me, and I hope for this whole council, that's a pretty big deal. That needs to be a priority is that, um, all of the partners that are using that space are treated equally. And so I think we do want to be that voice. So I guess on, in my opinion, this is one of those things where there are so many things going on and so many unknowns and a master plan going on. I think that I would suggest that council lets, um, goes ahead and follows the recommendation from staff who's been a part of the, uh, all of the discussions leading up to this. People have questions or feel?
Have you been, oh, go ahead, girl.
I was saying, no, I completely agree. And I think Shannon laid it out well, not impacting partner organizations, existing events, not an additional subsidy. Um, so I fully agree with that recommendation. If there is some version of one that doesn't impact what we've made clear is important to us, run with it. That's what.
Jay, you been at all the meetings? Are you in agreement?
I am.
I wonder if there's an opportunity, right? Like I, obviously you guys have been in the meetings recently and that's super important. Just trying to throw out ideas like for maybe opportunities there. And I'm curious, um, on two layers there, right? Like, and, and our resident entities are super important. So I wonder if there's an opportunity, you know, NRO is there in the summer, right? It's like, is there an opportunity on this music front when the NRO is not there to, to maybe up our game and, and drive a little more visitation? When I look at the BTO numbers, you know, kind of tapering off here the last couple of months, that gives me concern. And when I look at other communities, you know, with the programming from the arts really having a compelling draw, I'd like, I worry about waiting and, and, and kind of falling further behind. So that's.
I think that's a good point, Todd. But again, it goes back to like, we don't want to make assumptions. We have this robust master plan that, where we're going to hear from the community. So instead of gung off in a dodel information or making assumptions, really having the, the community input that can help us, in, inform us of the route we need to go. So I think a year, maybe two, where our popular music isn't as robust as we'd like it to be, I'd rather, when we do decide a direction, know that we have heard from the community.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm inclined more towards action and learning and using that as an opportunity to learn, especially with a minimal investment of fifty to a hundred K here. Super sensitive to the other arts organizations and want to make sure they're absolutely funded and, and getting programming. And just, yeah, I wonder if it's like, hey, in non-summer, can we, you know, do some? And, and I love option number two, right? Like you got some free shows. That's always driving community goodwill. Certainly driving some visitor nights during some off-seasons and driving some, some sales tax and some, some, you know, use of our restaurants, just a thought there. And then I also wonder if there's an opportunity, you know, when we think about kind of this ten-year progression of the arts in Breckenridge and, you know, obviously there's been stops and starts and challenges. Is there an opportunity from the branding perspective at a super high level, at the top of the funnel to kind of champion the arts with the BTO? And, and maybe that's a lane it shouldn't be in, but I guess those are two questions for me.
Well, I think, don't you feel like this is all coming out of the master plan process though? Like a lot of these questions need really in-depth analysis as part of the master.
And maybe that one won't still the master plan's done, but I'd love to see us.
And the arts are in the BTOs. I mean, it's not like they're not existent in the BTO's work. They're there.
Yeah.
It's just on a high level. It's not event, event by event.
Yeah. And, and maybe there's a series that could be branded and championed by the BTO. I mean, I think there's just an ask there. I think it's an ask for help for some marketing, right? Is that, am I reading that right?
Well, I think, uh, yes. I, I do think we'll, we'll have these conversations as a part of the cultural master plan. I mean, this is a great white paper. It's, this is the kind of data that's going to inform that cultural master plan about the marketplace. Um, and I think how we respond to that landscape and, and what it's going to take in the shifts that, um, you know, our arts community, whether it's music and pop, popular entertainment or film, you know, that what, what, what are we going to have to change in order to maintain at least? Maybe develop, um, what we currently have today in these fourteen cultural facilities that the town has invested in so much in. So yes, I do, I do think there is, um, a, a lot of opportunity for us to kind of, uh, come up with a collective strategy. But do you?
And it's a competitive marketplace. Um, I think that's sort of like the NRO, you don't have as much competition in the county. Whereas popular music, there's more competition. And I think one of the considerations that is relevant is just if you, we, you know, we decide to take a pause and really not pursue this for the next really two years, you may get feedback from people in town, hey, why aren't there any concerts anymore? So we're just going to have to have the answer because we're waiting for this cultural plan and we decided to take a pause. And that I think is the, the downside of, of waiting, um, is that we're not going to have music in town. Popular music at a level that is at the Riverwalk and may, we all, you may, people may see in other parts of the county. And the other thing that is relevant as far as touring musicians go is that they, there are agents who represent the artists that try and sell their artists to booking agents, uh, or sorry, for talent buyers that sell shows. Uh, and so there's kind of a routine there. And if we get out of the loop, we're, might be a little hard to get back in. So it may be more than two years before we get the acts we want. And so, and I know this has been issued before. People say, oh, why can't we have this act? Well, you can't just call up an agent and say, hey, we want you. Okay, we'll be there. There's a negotiation. There's a lot of competition. And so one of the considerations is just that by taking a pause, I think that that will, is very likely to have some long-term effects. And we might have to climb back out of that to get to a point where people in town are seeing music they want to see and feel like the Riverwalk is a consistent venue where they can go see popular music on a regular basis.
So do you not have any music booked for the next twelve to eighteen months now?
We have, we just confirmed Lyle Lovett, and I think we have one or two that we haven't announced yet in the books for twenty twenty-five. We have gone really light after seeing the trends, um, this past winter and going into summer. Artist routing, to Dave's point, has been very influenced. What, winter is our area of opportunity for popular music. But overall, when you're talking about it, popular music is probably lower on the priority list of the distinguishing arts and culture initiatives that are going to build the Breckenridge brand. You know, where we're going to see the, the impact, depending on where the goals, um, the best fit for us are mini festivals. You know, the, the Blue River Pathways Project, Visual Arts, that kind, the Arts District Campus, how that charm. So we do have a, a couple of things in which we are, you know, we might see a loss on that we would absorb potentially through our reserve funds. And then we would essentially, what we have to do is make a decision whether to stop our talent buyer agreement.
Great. So if we don't do any of the three options laid out and we continue status quo, we can expect three concerts a year because we're, that's what you have on the books now. That's probably what we can expect for twenty-six. And so when you say that we would have no live music, that.
I don't think, I'm, I'm actually, I'm the new kid here, but I think it's, we need to choose option one, two, or three because if there's no, there has to be some direction because if we don't choose one of those options, then we don't, we don't have any direction.
Well, that's, it would just be continuing what we're doing.
They can't continue what they're doing without a subsidy. They're losing money on it. So they need the subsidy to continue.
We are losing about seventy-five thousand dollars a year because of the volatility and risk of ticket sales. And so we need to make a decision about which direction to go.
And I think to the, the point about three shows a year, one other thing about the industry, um, in popular music anyway, is that there is a kind of theory, operating theory that people, especially locals, come to expect shows at a particular venue. So they're going to look, they, they know, oh, I want to go out next weekend. Where can I look to see their shows? So when there's not consistency, that can also affect ticket sales. It's kind of bizarre to think, the more shows you put on, the more tickets you, tickets you sell each show. Because people get used to seeing that type of music at that venue. So I think that's the other reason that a, um, less consistent strategy is, becomes more expensive per show because it's harder to make money when the shows are so sporadic.
I appreciate all of this conversation, but there's too much for us to learn really, like about the music industry. We just need to make a decision. So I'm going to encourage us to go ahead and vote. We can either vote for, I guess, zero, um, one, two, or three. And zero is being what Shannon suggested, which is basically to hit a pause. Yes?
Can I just ask one question? If we vote for zero, can we still support what Tamara explained to be? We're going to put ourselves out there just by ourselves.
Well, I don't know because the deal with the backstop is that then you don't, then you get charged some amount of money for the guy to come. You don't send enough tickets and then they're coming back to us and asking for fifteen thousand dollars as a backstop. So I think basically if we say take a pause, then they're pretty much taking a pause. And if they're actively searching now and only have three in the hopper, then I really doubt that there are going to be a bunch of people coming and saying, we want to play there. So I think we just need to move forward and say whether we're comfortable taking a full pause or whether one of the other options are the direction that we want to go.
I, I do want to just clarify, we would recommend number one without any, um, disruption to any other, the con, the dates or usage agreements that we currently have.
And no subsidy?
The
None.
No additional.
No additional subsidy. This is
I mean, none, no, no new subsidy.
So you would still be looking for the fifty grand? Is that what it is?
We haven't been, fifty, essentially what we have, fifty is what we've had over the last ten years. It offsets the venue costs that we have to open the doors, essentially. We haven't operated that as a backstop on losses since the merger of Breck Music. And that has increased essentially the, we've been able to manage the program from five concerts at a fifty thousand dollar backstop to upwards of eighteen annually, um, with that venue support on our staffing, essentially. It's the sta, it underwrites the staffing to keep the doors open to the possibility.
So there's no new money in the budget for twenty twenty-five. So you wouldn't be asked to provide any more than what you've been providing.
Exactly. And what we would do would just be, that helps float the, the staffing required to assess anybody who would, might be interested in coming in the door, whether we book that ourselves or it's a commercial one-time use rental agreement, subsidized rental agreement.
So would we pay fifty thousand less if we took a pause? Is that what?
No.
So we pay the fifty thousand no matter what?
Well, I think with that option, with what I had originally proposed, you really should see that fifty grand go away because there's no popular music to backstop. But, you know, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, you could keep the fifty that's, it has been in the budget over the years. Let them do the option number one without impacting any of the partner organizations or the special events like Snow Sculpture and Oktoberfest. And you guys could see what it brings, if it brings anything.
It, it just leaves the door open to the possibility of something coming across our plate that we can negotiate within the terms of our current usage agreements.
Okay, Steve, what's your vote on this?
Like option number one, I think leaving the door open is worth leaving the door open.
Great.
When pausing, complete.
I'd love to see two or three. I don't think that's going to happen and that's okay. Um, I, I'd love to see two or three with a no impact to the NRO. Would love to see us continue to stay in the music game and not go backwards there, especially as we see some of the BTO numbers go down. Want to make sure we're supporting the arts.
I support Shannon in her decision to pause. And so that's maybe a hybrid to one.
Very good. I second what Dick said.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. So what do you have for to back up the pause?
So if I heard right, it's the modification of one where you're not asked for any additional money. There's no impact to partners. There's no impact to events. And they float what dates are available and somebody There's no impact to partners, there's no impact to events, and they float what dates are available, and somebody wants them, then they want them. And no, you know. No additional subsidy. Is that fair?
All right. Well, thank you, guys. I know that this was a complicated discussion for us, but not having probably the depth of background that we really needed, but. Um, hopefully, we can have some success with that. And thanks for all you do.
Hang on to this, cuz I think we'll be revisiting it, and there's a lot of good information there.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick break.
I have another question.
Jay and I are winning these non-feeding conferences.
You are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interviews.
Control yourself.
We already have our, are we just jumping right in? Yeah. All right, Kelly, you're our first one, so we're gonna work out all the kinks on you.
I'm ready.
Yourself, and then we have three questions that we'll ask you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Kelly Ahern, and I'm very appreciative of your time. And, yes, let me, let me hear it.
We got your application, so we have a little bit of background on you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kelly, thank you so much for applying. I have a two-part question. One, have you attended any BOSAC meetings? And what unique perspective do you think you will contribute to the committee commission?
Um, yes, so for the past four years, I've been regularly attending the meetings um via Zoom. So I feel like I have a lot of insight into what BOSAC and um Open Space and Trails has has been working on over the last four years. Um, as far as unique insights, I would say that I think just like my knowledge of. What BOSAC has been working on, the master plan and the new signage plan. Um, I think that's a good perspective that I have going into it. Um, additionally, I grew up in Summit County, so I've had firsthand experience of watching the. Open space and trails grow since I was a child. Um, and I think that that is just a really unique perspective now that I have my own children. Um, when I was eight years old, there was about like under two hundred acres of open space. Now my daughter's eight years old, and there's over five thousand acres of open space, and I just think that's an incredible um accomplishment for the town of Breckenridge. And I additionally am an educator in Summit County School District, and I think that I ha, can bring the perspective of. Educating visitors and community members of the trails and trail etiquette, and I think that's something that. Um, as the trails have grown and there's more visitors on those trails, I think it's really important that we have that perspective um of education. And additionally, um, I have a lot of education with equity, and I know that the Open Space Master Plan, one of the goals is. Uh, equity and access, and I think that I can bring a lot of knowledge to BOSAC with um with that specific area and that goal. Yeah, thank you, Kelly. I'm really nervous.
That was fantastic.
Are we?
Um, thank you for that. Um, this is a little more specific and poignant, but what criteria would you use in, when analyzing uh open space acquisitions?
Great question. Um, I think that would be a learning curve for me. Um, but I do know that with the master plan, that there is kind of a framework for decision-making. And yeah, that would be a point that I would start at with BOSAC, and I think that that kind of low chart of. Decision-making on the master plan is really helpful in guiding like the decision-making for criteria that BOSAC and Open Space and Trails is working on. Um, with those four main goals in mind as well.
Great, thank you.
So you might have already answered this one, but um, how do you see the twenty twenty-three master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
I think it is sort of the guide for that, and um it's been great for me to be observing all the meetings where they were working on that. And I think they, BOSAC worked extremely hard with Open Space and Trails to to build that plan. Um, can you repeat that?
Sure. How do you see the?
Answering it.
How do you see the twenty twenty-three master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
Sure, yeah. So um, like I mentioned, it is sort of a framework that um is meant to help with decision-making. For the town of Breckenridge, so I think that that's, would be the um kind of foundation that you would start with, using that to make decisions with Open Space and Trails.
Great, thank you. All right, that's the interview. Thank you very much. You did a fantastic job.
Thanks, killer.
You should not.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it on behalf of myself and everyone else that's anxiously awaiting to meet you, so, yes, thank you.
Everyone.
Okay.
Dan.
Guess I should have a seat.
Please do, please sit down.
This is the hot seat.
Anyone you want.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a few questions for you, and um. I guess I'll ask you your, just go ahead and say your name, and then we'll go right into our three questions.
Okay, Dan Corwin.
Dan, thank you for applying. Uh, I have a two-part question. Have you ever attended any BOSAC meetings? And what unique perspective do you think you'll bring to the?
I've never attended any meetings. Um, I think the perspective that I can bring is just, I've been in the county a really long time. I've gotten more familiar with the the trails and the whole trail system. I hike a lot. I've gotten into mountain biking over the last couple of years, and I'm trying to get better. I volunteer for the trail work when they do volunteer um days up there, so. Um, what's amazing is to work on a trail, especially if it's just raw forest, and you go in there and cut it out, and you turn around, it's kind of, there's a trail there. So I've gotten into that. Um, I get out there as much as I can, and I think that's probably maybe the the best thing. That I can bring to BOSAC. Um, just my familiarity, my familiarity, my interest in it. Um, what's interesting real quick is that I'm not really sure exactly what BOSAC does, other than trying to create, maintain. Rebuild trails around. I I actually went on the website trying to read about it. So I'm not exactly sure. I know you try to secure property and things like that as a past realtor. Um, I might be able to help in that aspect. Um, but basically, um, lots of experience around town, being on the trails, and I think that's basically it.
Thank you, Dan.
Your answer leads great into my question. Uh, what criteria would you use if you were sitting on BOSAC? To evaluate a potential uh open space acquisition?
Well, probably to begin with, I think, look to see, you know, how it would work within the trail system. Um, which I, again, I don't know if you have staff that looks at all this stuff, or this is just what BOSAC should look to see if really that acquisition makes. Makes sense, and then see what's involved with with acquiring that property. Um, and then the value. Um, I think that's probably the biggest thing, um, is to see, does it make sense however much the town has to spend? Spend to buy that property? Is it being donated? You know, what's really involved there? And I think maybe that's where my real estate experience could come into play with that. Um, but then also, I guess you need to look at it to see, does it really work into the trail system? Is it necessary? Is it, who's it gonna benefit?
Thank you, Dan.
And the last one is, how do you see the twenty twenty-three master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
I can honestly say I'm not familiar with it. So I don't know.
Well, Dan, thank you so much for your interest, and we know you're a great community member, very involved, and really appreciate all that you do. Um, on golf and other areas of the community, and I like to see you out at trail days, and. Um, we'll be making a decision tonight, and then a staff member will let you know.
Great. And it looks like you've got a few good people out there. So um, I'm sure you guys will make the right decision. It's me great, but I think, you know, you've got a few people out there that I think would be really good too, so.
Thank you for applying. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you for the time.
Thanks for being involved, Dan.
Hello.
Hi.
Come on down and take a seat, and then you can just introduce yourself, and we'll give you a few questions.
Okay. Um, I'm Dan. Thanks for having me, by the way. I'm Dan Geetson. Um, I'm a local resident of Kennington Place neighborhood, and I'm here to take your questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, Dan, thank you for applying. Um, I have a two-part question for you. First, have you ever attended a BOSAC meeting? And secondly, what unique perspective do you think you'd bring to BOSAC?
Well, I haven't attended a BOSAC meeting, um, particularly, but I've worked for for local governments all my career. I've been to a lot of. Government meetings, planning commissions, um, town council meetings, things like that. I understand how processes work, our review, review processes work and stuff like that, regulatory type of. Um, type of things I've worked on, so I I'm familiar in that kind of capacity. And I've worked on trail projects in the past when I worked for Silverthorne. I did a lot of of stuff on the bike path when that was developing, and I guess it still is, it's evolving over time. But um, so I have some experience with that, with design and with environmental reviews and permitting and stuff like that.
Great. Um, what criteria would you use if you were sitting on BOSAC to analyze a potential uh open space acquisition?
I'd probably look at the history, the background to see what's been done today, that there's any past easements or past history that exists, and. What type of steps needs, need to be done to follow through on that, whether it's, you know. Acquiring an easement, negotiating with property owners. I'm not sure if that's really BOSACs. Um, if they get into that level, but looking at all the details, looking at, looking at past history and records. Um, a lot of that is, you know, telling information on where you need to go and what type of approaches you might need to take. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And how do you see the twenty twenty-three master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
I think the plan's really, really well written. I don't, I haven't been that familiar, familiar with it. Excuse me, I'm talking fast cuz I'm nervous. But um, but obviously applying for this, I I read up on the plans over the, over the last week or so and looked at some of the projects. I like what it has to say. Um, I I I think that issues like in the future might be. And we we talked about this on a trail build recently, e-bikes, whether e-bikes are gonna, you know, whether that's an issue. and we, we talked about this on a trail build recently, e-bikes, whether e-bikes are gonna, you know, whether that's an issue or not. Um, as far as enforcement, whether things are, because even though in trails, you don't really want e-bikes, but people are gonna push. And it, just seeing how that evolves is, is interesting to me and I'd like to kind of keep on top of that. Um, I like the connections, the connectivity. And I, I think that, um, increasing connectivity is always a good idea. Talking about trails or roads or infrastructure, utility lines, whatnot. Um, I like the, in the, in the recent minutes, the Toad Alley boardwalk stuff that's coming up, that I think is a good project. As well as the Nightmare in Baldy. So I'm trying to learn a little bit as much as I can. And obviously I'll learn a whole lot more, you know, if I'm selected.
Thanks, Dan. Um, we'll be voting on who is going to fill this seat tonight and then staff will go ahead and let you know, but we really appreciate you part in this process.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The narcissist's question for, from the lady in Colorado Springs. Hello, come on and sit down and you can just go ahead and say your name and then we have a few questions.
Sure, my name's Nancy Held.
Thanks, Nancy.
Hi Nancy, thanks for applying. Um, I have a two-part question.
Sure.
One, have you ever applied or attended a BOSAC meeting?
I have not, sorry.
Unique perspective do you think you'd bring to BOSAC?
Um, well, I don't know how unique it is among other, my other, the other candidates, but, um, I'm, I've been hiking for my whole life, you know, for years. And I'm just very attuned to how trails are maintained and signage. I guess those are my two main areas that I'm interested in. And, you know, I, I mean, I have a science background, so I like look at data and I like to get information before making decisions. So just that background has helped to inform me. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi Nancy.
Hi.
This is a, a kind of a specific question that if you were on the committee, uh, how would you analyze, um, an open space acquisition? What criteria would you use?
Well, I guess I, I guess I'd have to know more about. Hmm, what criteria? Well, who's gonna use the land? What's, what's the, um, you know, what population is gonna use the land? Or how we're gonna, how it will be used? What's this? Thinking about the future, where would we see that land? How, or how would it be used in 10, 20 years? Um, and the land around it? Yeah, I have not done, I haven't had a lot of experience in that, but that's.
Great answer. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Um, and then how do you see the 2023 master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
Oh, I don't even know if I could answer that because I don't know enough about it. Yeah.
That's all right. Thank you Nancy very much.
No problem.
It's a quick interview because we have a lot to get through, but we really appreciate you applying and, um, we're excited to see your interest and.
Very much, okay.
Thank you.
Hi, come on down. All the way down to right in front.
Yeah. Two of them.
Thank you so much for coming. If you can just say your name and then we have a few questions that we're gonna ask.
Certainly. My name is Pete Naka and I spell that N-A-K-A, as opposed to some previous minutes where it was misspelled. That's okay.
Thank you for applying. Um, I have a two-part question. One, have you ever attended a BOSAC meeting? And what unique perspective do you think you'd bring to BOSAC?
So I went to several of the meetings around the closure of Toad Alley. I think I voiced my concerns over that, maybe when it first came up. In terms of, uh, unique perspective, I think I'm a new guy in town and been here less than three years. This is my third summer here. Really enjoy it. Um, you know, I want the trails to be open for everyone to enjoy and hopefully not abused. So, um, you know, I have the new guys experience. Most of my hiking experience is up in Cucumber Gulch. I don't ride around the bikes, which I think a lot of people do. All that my experience with people riding in the gulches, they've been very considerate. You know, I am involved in a lot of other, um, uh, activities in the community, uh, charities and stuff like that, which I think was in my letter of interest. And so hopefully you all read that. Uh, so, you know, I have been involved in all the places I've lived and I want to get more involved in this community.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a kind of a scenario, uh, if you were sitting on BOSAC and there's no wrong answers. Um, if you're sitting on BOSAC and a property acquisition was put forth, uh, to you, what criteria would you use to evaluate the, uh, the acquisition?
So I guess I, you know, I don't have any experience with property acquisition. I have to get some, uh, information about, uh, values that, of other acquisitions and the strategic location of these locations and the value that they would bring to the community. And, uh, you know, hopefully other people in the community have ideas about how ideal that, uh, land acquisition would be.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hi Pete, one, one more scenario question. How do you see the 2023 master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
Okay, quite honestly, I'd say I'm not that familiar with, with it. Um, but, you know, I'd certainly look forward to getting more familiar with it.
Thank you. All right, Pete, that's it.
Okay.
Not so bad, right? Thank you very much for your interest. We're gonna make a decision tonight and then someone on staff will call and let you know.
Okay, great. I'm glad you let me participate in the process.
Thanks for being willing.
All right.
Thanks Pete.
Welcome to the community. Hello. That's what everyone keeps saying. Just introduce yourself and then we're gonna ask you a few questions. And we all have read your, um, your application and so we have that background information.
I'm Matt Powers. Do you need more than that?
Nope. Thank you.
Matt, I have a two-part question. Um, first, have you ever attended a BOSAC meeting?
Yes, quite a few BOSAC meetings. Um, I was on the commission and was not reappointed two years ago. And, um, I have attended occasionally during that period of time, so.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. And what unique perspective do you think you'd bring to BOSAC?
Um, I, I, I hope that, I don't know if it's unique, but having sort of been involved with the commission earlier and understanding, sort of the, the charge of the commission, I think, to be a support mechanism for the council. Because you guys have a lot on your plate and getting a group of people to, um, review and discuss and make those recommendations, I hope is probably a very important part of, of the commission's responsibility. I think, you guys probably know this, a real estate background, um, and being involved with sort of evaluating property values, market conditions and, and identifying opportunities, I think is, and, and not being privy to exact sessions. I, I don't know a whole lot about what's gone on over those past couple of years. But knowing things like how Al Katami finally played out and things like that was like, I thought that was really cool that we were talking about it years ago. And I know that these things have sort of long fuses, but to see things like that sort of play out is, is pretty cool. But I, I have missed being part of that conversation a lot. So, um, I think it's really cool and I hope that's a value that, you know, is, is important to the council right now.
Hey Matt, uh, your, your answer plays well into my question. Uh, this is more specifically, if you were sitting on BOSAC again, what criteria would you use to evaluate potential property acquisitions for open space?
I mean, it's, I, I think everything is, is case by case. Uh, I, I mean, you know, there's a lot of stuff that translates pretty directly from the way that I work every day to, you know, location, 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 you know, what is it really worth? But I also think that, um, you know, the piece of how does it fit into the puzzle of the open space? Where does the conservation, um, benefit come in? How does it, you know, offer a potential trail connection to, for example, alleviate traffic in certain areas or things like that? So I hope that being able to identify those things and, um, a- a- at the same time, I don't, I always felt a little helpless in some ways because being able to communicate with those landowners and, you know, the people who eventually get to make the decisions is always kind of the most challenging part. But, you know, I, I think to be able to be involved with that conversation to some degree can be, can be helpful. Just offering that experience that I've gained over time.
Great, thank you.
And Matt, I think you touched on this broadly in your application, but how do you see the 2023 master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
Well, I'm trying to compare it to how my earlier experience on BOSAC was. And I, and I think that really the intent of, and I wasn't involved in how it finished up and how it was eventually finalized and presented to the community. But I know that the intent, or I feel like the intent of the, the document to begin with was to not have sort of these very strict marching orders or to be very loose in that regard. Also, um, I think the intent was to provide a framework for conversation and collaboration with the rest of the commission that will allow some level of common sense and creativity to be applied to whatever decision is before the commission. So, um, I know that it's been in place for, you know, what, a year and a half now? And I, I'm not exactly sure how those conversations roll out and how the reference back to the master plan is used. But, um, just going back and reviewing it, it seems like the framework that was arrived at in the master plan is, is a, a great conduit for that sort of conversation that could help arrive at, at reasonable recommendations to bring to the council.
Thanks.
All right, Matt, that's it. So thank you very much for your time and we really appreciate you applying and all of your involvement in the town. We're gonna make a decision tonight and then somebody on staff will call and let you know, or you can, or you can be listening during the night meeting.
Tune in.
All right, thank you guys.
Hi there.
Hi, everyone.
So if you could just introduce yourself really briefly, we've all read your, um, application that was in our packet and then we have a few questions that we'll.
Sure, yeah, I'm Colin Stingley. Uh, I, um, I work for the ski patrol and bike patrol and I work over at Neighborhood Bike. I work on bikes with Clay Schwark. And I, uh, am the co-founder and chair of Go Program Foundation, which is a mental health nonprofit out of the Front Range mostly, but also up here. I've lived in Breck since 2010 and, um, yeah, I would love to be a part of this organization.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for applying Colin. Um, I have a two-part question. First, have you ever attended a BOSAC meeting?
No, I haven't actually ever attended a BOSAC meeting. Um, Duke Barlow's always been my liaison. I spent a lot of time with him. He's my boss, so it's a little uncomfortable him standing back there. Or, I'm sorry, was my boss, I should say. So he fills me in on a lot of things, but no, I have never attended.
Okay, uh, what unique perspective do you think you'll bring to the BOSAC?
Well, I, I'm sure everybody can vouch for this or they've all spoke to this, but I am an avid user of our trails and open space. This is something that has literally molded my personality and who I am. Since I moved here in 2010, I, I try to get out and explore, um, every nook and cranny that I possibly can, almost every day, it seems like. I am well, excuse me, I am well-connected in the community. I recreate in our trails and open space with a myriad of different groups and different types of people. I am primarily a downhill mountain biker and I, I know there's a lot of mountain bikers on this crew and, but I do feel like I bring a different, unique perspective. I've traveled all over the States, all over Canada and all over Europe, seeking out different trails. Seeing ease in how they operate, how they conserve and preserve different areas, how they build trails, uh, how they treat their trail areas. And I think I can bring that perspective. But I, I'm not only just a mountain biker. I appreciate trail running, backcountry skiing, uh, backpacking, hiking. So like, I'm not here to lobby for downhill mountain bike trails. I'm here to make the trails and the open space the best they possibly can. And I think that that means understanding all user groups, um, and seeing all angles of, um, BOSAC, our community, and, and vouching for the people who live and operate here and, and how to bring people in. And I, I, I think that I can, I can do that based on, uh, my connectivity with the community and how much and how much I care about, uh, this, the open space and trails. And lastly, above all these things, conservation is one of the most important things to me. So I, I sort of view it as, um, we're, we're lucky all to have the use of the trails and of this open space. But to conserve it, like this, this is not our land and, and we need to do, uh, the best we can to, to keep it the way we are and even grow it. And when it comes to wildlife habitat and just keeping it the way it is or the way it should be. So with the passion, my connectivity with the community, I, I know that I will give it everything that I have and be a very valuable member for this committee.
Thank you.
Hey Colin, um, this is kind of a specific question, no wrong answers. If you were sitting on BOSAC and a property acquisition opportunity came in front of you, what, what criteria would you use to evaluate that open space opportunity?
Uh, geez, that's a, that's a good question. That's a difficult question. I think obviously what it costs, the value of such, and what it means to our community to take back that land or acquire that land. But I, I'm, I'm not well-versed enough on the criteria, the criteria of land acquisition. Honestly, that's something that I would love to know a lot more about.
Great, thank you.
And then one more kind of specific question. How do you see the 2023 master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a good lengthy document. I was just reading through a bunch of it today. I think it's awesome. And with the four main initiatives and priorities, I think that that's a great guy. Those are great guiding principles. And one of the things that I really stands out to me are inclusion and how we can basically bring in more tr- trail users to different areas, provide more access to people who live in the town. And then being a steward of land, basically, stewardship in general. And I, but the document as a whole, I think, is an amazing guide. I think it could be more specific in some ways. But I think that we can use that to guide and use it as guiding principles to make a better Brecken, or open space and trails area.
Great, thanks. All right, thank you Colin.
Thanks, thanks everyone for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for applying and we're gonna, it's fine, we're making a decision tonight, so, um, someone on staff will call you or you can listen to the night meeting.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep working on it.
Is it raining now?
I don't know. I've been inside for a long time. I don't even think it's sunny out here anymore.
Sorry to keep you waiting, but thank you.
I'm used to it with my last name, so no worries.
Thank you very much for coming. If you'll just state your name for the record and then we have a few questions for you.
My name is Nancy Woods.
Well, thank you for applying, Nancy. I have a two-part question. First, have you ever attended a BOSAC meeting? And what unique perspective do you think you'll bring to BOSAC?
I have not attended a meeting, although I kind of keep track of what's going on in our local paper and I try to volunteer a lot around the county. I think I bring, well, my background, I have business degree, marketing, finance is my background. I worked for a Fortune 300 company. I've been in the county for 30 years. Very involved with the school district the first 12, 15 years that I was here, serving on the school board and actually working with the town of Breckenridge when we built the two elementary schools because you took over the fields for us and we were so grateful. But the condition was you got to schedule them during the summer, which we were fine with. But instead of, you know, the inch of topsoil we would have put on back in the day, you came in and like four, five inch. It was fabulous. I know none of you were serving back then, but really appreciated that. I just think I bring a locals perspective, you know, and I have the time now and I'm willing to serve and and that's kind of it. Any other things you want to ask?
Actually, there is. Yes. Nancy, thank you for being here. This is sort of a specific question that there are no wrong answers to, but if you were sitting on the committee, a committee and there was a open space acquisition put in front of you, how would you, what criteria would you use to evaluate that purchase, that potential purchase?
Well, most likely the cost, the size, how many people would be impacted by purchase, like for a park? Is it specifically a trail? That type of thing. And, you know, looking at the finance, well, I'm kind of analytical and financial kind of person too, so I want to know that, you know. Do we have the money to do that instead of doing this project? You know, that type of, you know, where's the and where's the value? How many people do we serve with that? And, you know, is it land that's protected forever, basically? So anyway.
That's great. Thank you so much.
And then our last question is, how do you see the 2023 master plan guiding the town of Breckenridge Open Space and Trails program?
How do I see it? I know there was an issue in the paper recently about a shortage of funds, like $12 million, but that was just more of a budgeting issue. I I'm not sure how much town council interacts with the trail group per se. I think there's a couple of you that are specifically members that advise on that. But I, you know, I hope we continue to do trail building and open space and and add to the people of our town and county and visitors. I confront a lot of people when I'm out trail walking and and talking to them and, you know, they think this is one of the best things about Breckenridge is that we we care about the outdoors here and I care about the outdoors. And my kids are grown and grown, so now I have time to do more of that. But anybody else?
I think that's it for today. Nancy, thank you so much for your time and thank you for being interested in being involved in the town of Breck.
I appreciate that.
We're gonna decide tonight and then staff will call you.
Okay, I don't think I really need my hat.
Good luck out there.
Yes. Nice. Nice seeing many of your faces again.
Great to see you.
All right. So Shannon, are we ready to just go right into Natural Medicine Healing Centers?
Scott is very excited to talk to you about this.
Go ahead, Scott.
Any questions? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'll give you a brief overview. I don't want to go too deeply into the memo, assuming, I know you all read it. Basically, there is a new law within the Colorado voters approved in in 2022 that allows for natural healing centers, natural medicine and natural healing centers. And as spelled out in the memo, essentially what's before you tonight is whether whether the town council wants to take on additional, any kind of additional regulations regarding time, place, or manner of these healing centers. And it's sort of the practice of dispensing natural medicine, which again, typically there are a number of different subcategories, but psilocybin is probably the easiest one to point to. And so again, there's a bit of background here. I can dig into it a little bit. Just give you a concept of what this looks like. These healing centers, I think one of the things that we've talked about, at least internally with the staff, as you said, as I mentioned in there, a number of folks who met together to talk about how they apply this within the town of Breckenridge. The way this works is you have a site, a healing center, in in which case the experience of whatever occurs there is facilitated by an individual who's approved by the state. So you have a facilitator and a healing center. There's a preparation center where they go and they meet and discuss what's to come. They then do an administration session where the actual administration of that natural medicine occurs. And then there's a post sort of integration session, a post discussion of how that might have changed or, you know, change your perspective or benefited you in some ways. So that's generally what it looks like. So to compare it, one of the easiest sort of questions or comparisons we've had is about the legalization of cannabis, of marijuana several years ago. And if you speak with police department and Derek's here as well, the parallel there is very similar. A dispensary for marijuana is very similar to, let's say, a liquor store, where you go in and you buy a product and you leave to consume it off-premises. That's generally speaking, the model. And again, there are some differences in there, but this this model being the natural medicine centers would be different in that it's not someplace where you go and you pick up, you pick up your medicine and you leave and you consume it somewhere else, but it's actually a guided, facilitated process. And so it's much more of a clinical space. I guess is what the what the conclusion is of what we've been evaluating, what this looks like as we go through the regulatory rulemaking process. That's also kind of what the state is is envisioning. And so it it won't look like a dispensary. And I know a lot of people jump to that conclusion about, oh, it's gonna be just like, it's it's not. It's very different, I would say, just in the way it's established and and set up, given the facilitator and the processes for administering that. Like I said, um, the town, you know, the state rules and the state, both the law and the regulations that are forthcoming. I should mention too that this really begins in the beginning of 2025, so we have a little bit of a transition, but not a ton of time. But basically, the state has provided for local jurisdictions. So there's some things that we simply can't, we as a town cannot administer, cannot change. Again, you can't say you can't do it at all within the town. You can't say you can't drive it through to go to, you know, a legitimate healing center. So but there are some rate, some allowances for the time, place, and manner, as is outlined in the memo, in the memo. And when we talked about it in the internal working group, and again, that includes town clerk, the police chief, the assistant police chief, the planning manager, town attorney and myself. We we went through each of those three areas, time, place and manner, and sort of talked about what that might look like or some options that you all might want to consider if you were to decide to do an addition, any kind of additional kind of regulations. From a time standpoint, staff basically didn't feel like it was, there there are some municipalities are looking at, okay, it's only can can only occur between eight and five as an example. So that may be a regulation on time. As from a staff standpoint, we didn't feel like that was a really a really good approach in terms of, I think we need to let this thing kind of have its own, you know, operate on its own accord and not to put sort of somewhat arbitrary limitations on, oh, at five o'clock, therefore this thing needs to be closed and whatever's going on in that room, you know, people need to to move on. Didn't feel like that was a really good fit. So recommendation there was that we didn't locally regulate, regulate the operational time for the healing centers. That was one of the suggestions that we had or one of the discussions of points that we had. So for your consideration. Placewise, this was the one where I think we had the most traction. And there, again, we have some similarities perhaps with the marijuana dispensary model that we had. Some municipalities across the state are considering restrictions on the location of the healing centers. So right now, by state law, to be to be in place on on January 1st of 25, no healing center may be within a thousand feet of a childcare center or preschool, elementary, junior middle, high school facility. So what we've done is provided you all a map to show you what that looks like. And that's the last page of this portion. And you can see based on that map that there are some locations that would be commercial spaces, for an example, or even private spaces that would be, that could potentially be available for these natural medicine healing centers if you just accepted the standard state approach. And this, I think, as from a group, staff felt like this is the one where we have the most ability to sort of decide where it makes sense to have these natural, natural medicine, medicine, healing centers. And so the question, as you can see and highlighted there, was, is there anything in addition to the 1,000-foot restriction that you all would like to consider? Staff didn't have a strong opinion other than to say that it seems to be the most, the best place to kind of consider what it might make sense, given kind of types of uses and adjacent uses.
So I thought it was really helpful because you and I talked about this before, that you reminded me that when we were looking at, well, not we, but when town council was looking at where to put marijuana facilities, that actually went to a community vote.
Correct.
Is there any reason not to just go ahead and do like a similar overlay as the marijuana centers so that we're just consistent? The community sort of spoke about, I understand that it's different and that it's not today, at least that it's, you know, in place and you have to stay and it's a little bit of a different service than the marijuana stores. But I mean, I just think over the long term, that could change. And so I guess I'm just wondering why we wouldn't just do a similar overlay to the marijuana.
That's a great question for you all to consider. I guess my response would be that the consideration for the the vote of of, you know, of the people for regarding dispensaries was primarily based on the fact that do you want to have a marijuana dispensary on Main Street and is that a good reflection of our family-friendly, you know, community? And that was the question at the time.
Which I feel like is kind of the same question that we could ask ourselves with this.
I think it's a valid question. And so again, I think that map helps inform you as far as what those might look like. And if you were to say, hey, we we want the same type of overlay district, I think that's that's allowable under the state regulations and the state law that's been passed here. So I think that's, I think to answer your question, I think it's worthy of discussion and consideration. I felt like our consensus from staff was that it was a was worthwhile to think about that as a as a model.
Yeah.
Even though it's a little different, again, like we said, it's more of a clinic versus a dispensary model.
Scott, it sounds like a lot of the details will come out in the rulemaking. When do we expect that? And would that come out and still give us time to pass something?
The link in there shows the current draft of the rules. So it's it's pretty extensive and they vetted it fairly thoroughly. I understood it to be by the end of September, but that it has to be enough time that people can make decisions before the end of the year and get the regulations in place. But I think you've got a substance, believe you've got a lot of it sitting in that in that link, as we understand. Been a long process. I mean, it's several, several month process as far as creating those those rules. The other piece was just manner that was just mentioned and that's sort of like, how would you, how would you administer this drug? And once again, we from staff didn't feel like it was really of value in saying, you know, we need to add a licensing provision from the town's side to say, we're also going to license practitioners or, you know, that just didn't seem like, since we have expertise and it's not really where we we necessarily felt like it was a good way to go. So again, you know, kind of to, in summary, would love to hear what your thoughts are, if there are things that we can do as staff to help execute a vision that you all may have and agree upon, as to how we may administer these things. And really, our our focus really was specifically on location and was not on time or manner.
Just a reminder, you have Kirsten on if you have any legal questions for her.
What's that?
Were you on during Maryland?
I was not, but I, Kelly, I'm thinking exactly the way you are. I mean, that was precisely my approach. And and my reasoning is we can always make it less restrictive later. We don't know how these are going to be marketed. We know they wrote the, they crafted this piece of legislation very carefully, calling it what they did and and, you know, I I have no issues with the concept of it. I just, I I'm not sure until we really see some of these things roll out and have a year or two under our belt and how it goes statewide, that I I think the marijuana overlay is a is a great format to to approach it at first, like we can make it less restrictive down the road if we so choose to, once we've kind of seen some of these open and how they do in communities.
So does any, do people feel comfortable with that or Steve?
I had a couple of questions. Scott and maybe Mark is still here or Chris. What would we call this in fitting it into a land use guideline district?
I I think for marijuana, we, I don't think it was an overlay as much as it was certain land use districts that we allow it in.
And that's what I, that's my question. What would this fit into? What do we call it?
I don't.
It's kind of like. Medical center.
Natural healing center.
Natural healing center.
Yeah, really from good, good question, Steve. Really from a land use standpoint, our land use designations are quite basic. We have commercial, we have institutional and residential. So really would just fit in as a commercial land use with with some of the, you know, things that we want to get more specific for like marijuana, where we write in that we only allow it in certain land use districts. We can kind of go a a layer deeper and create that overlay. But if someone just came in and has just a, you know, a commercial, whether it be medical or it it could be industrial, if it just fits under that commercial designation that we don't have called out, then any land use district that it's a recommended use, it it could go in without any negative points being assigned under policy two, which regulates land use. And then under other instances where we want to go further, such as what we did on Main Street with with marijuana, we do, you know, we we have the ability to prohibit in certain areas if we get specific.
Anything, any other questions?
I guess, um, you know, to Dick's point where it's, it is easier to loosen up restrictions than pay them up. I guess I would love to hear more about your reasoning for not putting a time restriction on it. Is it because for people that work from eight to five that they would have access at at that point, would it be reasonable to do an eight to eight or or like, I think that there is, time does have a place in this discussion.
I think from staff standpoint, well, first off, the model, if you're talking about the experiential element of it, it can last anywhere between four to six hours. And so there's really no sense, there's no, I mean, I somewhat familiar to me in terms of reading through this, but I don't, I can't tell you that, hey, it's going to end in four hours. And so you might as well start at one, you'll be done at five and you're out. And I think that's the problem is that we didn't want to insert ourselves where a practitioner or a facilitator would have way more knowledge than we would. And we would have said, well, actually, there's a, you know, there's a two to three hour float in here that that doesn't make sense. And so that's why we feel like it was worth our, it was, you know, sort of being un uneducated on how this actually works, just sort of creating somewhat arbitrary timeframes may inhibit or prohibit how how things actually function.
And I get, and I understand that. I appreciate that that argument. I guess I was coming for more of a and uneducated perspective as well of, are we concerned that people would start going in at, let's say, 8:00 PM and and seen as a as an evening activity of sorts? And I again, this is, I I don't know where this is headed and where what we're looking at, but I guess that's where my concern comes from.
Again, we vetted this from from the town staff side of side of things and the thinking was, what's the fear? Well, you're going to have a bachelor party that comes in and wants to experience this. And and yet, if you look at the way this has been developed, it's about natural medicine. So you would have to have, once again, you have a pre-meeting with this healer for, I don't know, an hour or two hours to discuss what the process is. Then you have the actual, you know, experiential part of it, and then you have a follow-up. So it doesn't lend itself necessarily. So it doesn't lend itself necessarily to a, you know, we're going to go and, and have fun with this. That's, that's kind of the perspective that we've had, the way it's been constructed as natural medicine, as a way to benefit people that have addiction problems or other, you know, other real challenges, mental health challenges. Again, we didn't feel like that was, that, that's really where this is focused. It's not intended to be, I mean, almost in the same way that, you know, marijuana was approved as medicine before it was approved as recreation. So I think we're still in that medicine side, if you will, from, from, from this perspective.
And I don't disagree with you. It's just thinking back of like when it, when marijuana was medicinal and you needed a doctor's note and they were handing them out like, you know, if you hand them head box and you get, you get one of those. And so trying to see what that goes.
There is a similar type of therapy already operating in Summit County. And it's, it's just not like that. Like you definitely are up and down and finished out before you leave the facility. And it is quite monitored.
I, I think, you know, the way to look at it is, let's say if medical marijuana was more like a pharmacy where you're just coming in, going and picking up something. This is almost more like an outpatient medical procedure. So if you go in and have surgery and you're under a very heavy drug with anesthesia and you need that recovery time, you know, for, for some people it might be an hour, some people it might be three hours. Or just therapy to kind of the, the Marika's point, it's, it's very different than just going in, picking up the drug and administering it off-site and kind of being out. And so I think that's what we were, we were looking at.
Thank you.
Chris, could you talk about how hard if we just went with the state guidelines, the distance from childcare centers or schools? If we wanted and a center popped up, we decided we did want to regulate further. What would that process be like? Would those healing centers be grandfathered? Like what would be our course of action if we decide the state law didn't have enough parameters for us?
Yeah, similar, similar to other things that have a, a boundary. If they're already operating and then something else comes within that bubble, they're allowed to continue. They aren't.
Okay, so the school.
They aren't for, yeah, they aren't forced out. But if it were to discontinue, then they, someone else couldn't come in there at a later time. If that school or childcare or something else was to operate.
Okay. Are we ready to make a decision on this?
I think so.
You're not sure?
Yes.
Marika, do you want to start us off? And it can just be as simple as, well, I guess I, I'm assuming that you want to move forward with some sort of overlay or the thousand foot buffer or, you know.
Yeah, I think the thousand foot buffer is required, right? That's state law. Yeah. Um, yes, I like that map was super helpful. I agreed with maybe starting with the marijuana overlay district. And I agree with staff, no, I don't want any time restrictions.
I agree.
I agree. I think the marijuana vote was in 2012, so over a decade ago. So the culture around both marijuana, about this, I think, has changed significantly. So, and what Scott highlighted so well is that it is not you grab the medicine and go. It is a specific clinical experience. So I'm fine with what Jay and Marika said for the first year. Let's see what happens. I mean, not necessarily in breath, but in communities across the state. But decide if it is something we need to limit so much. I don't even remember what the marijuana overlay district is. If that could be sent to us, that would be helpful too. But I'm fine initially going that direction, but really reevaluating it. If it's something that's unnecessary, we deem based on what's happening in other facilities across the state. I don't think we should over-regulate it.
I agree. I, I mean, Carol's got a good point, but I don't think that should be part of the ordinance. I think we just do the overlay and then, you know, if a future council or this council down the road wants to bring it up, they can.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to be on the leading edge of, of figuring things out for this new kind of healing center business. We've got too much from a brand perspective to protect. I'd be open to an overlay district. I'd also be open to expanding that buffer between the schools. That would be a valuable thing to protect our, our, yeah, our community. I think I want to see how it plays out, right? Like what's the, it's being proposed as this clinical, you know, situation. Is that really how it's going to play out? So that's where I'd like to see what actually happens. I'd love to look at the childcare, childcare center budget. That's all I got.
I think the greatest risk right now is the horse gets out of the barn and we can't stop it. So we should be ahead of this. We have the, the public sentiment and the brand of Breckenridge is we're not going to have pot shops downtown. You know, we, I think there was a discussion about smoking rooms downtown. And until we know more about this, I think the marijuana district overlay is a safe way to proceed. We're not saying you can't have one of these here in Breckenridge. Just have to have it in the right place. So that's what I support.
Great. Thank you. We'll bring something back.
Thank you for helping out. Thanks, Scott. Shannon, we're, we're a little behind. Are we okay to go into the fireworks discussion? Or should we switch with Copper Baron or?
Let's switch and do Copper Baron. We can always do fireworks later.
Perfect. Okay. All right. We're going to go into planning matters, Copper Baron Development Agreement. Mark, and I believe is Craig coming down?
Right now.
And Craig, Craig. And Ellie, really. Yeah, I know. She came, she came very quickly. Thank you, Ellie, and thanks Craig for being here and with us today.
Thank you for having me.
And start us off.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have Craig Campbell, the owner of the unit two in Copper Baron condos with me. He has applied for a development permit agreement to convert the unit from commercial use to employee housing. This was previously brought before you during the July 23rd meeting where staff received feedback to consider an area meeting income rental restriction and a resale appreciation cap. After discussing it internally between the Housing and Planning Department, as well as reviewing the precedent from 2022 that didn't include that, which we explained in the memo was due to the change in the housing admin rules. Staff is now recommending a 110% AMI rental rate restriction, which would include utilities in that. And for this unit, because the HOA fees pay for the utilities, it would include the HOA fees. And we, staff is not recommending a resale appreciation cap as we believe the rental rate restriction would limit the resale value for the property on its own. And we have the proposal fully explained in the memo and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ellie. Craig, do you want to add anything or you want to just listen to the conversation? I don't know what, if you were prepared to say something or would rather.
Yeah. But I want to be sure what I have to say is relevant based on your, your comments. So it'd be great if I could maybe get an understanding of the position of council and then maybe make some comments.
Fair enough. That sounds great. So are there questions? Let's go ahead and start the discussion because we have questions on the end of the packet. As far as there's still a density transfer into the historic district. And then upon listening to the conversation last time, staff is recommending that they do the 110% AMI rental cap, but no appreciation cap. So let's go ahead and start the discussion there. Did you want to kick us off?
Sure. I, you know, I was probably the loudest voice on the appreciation and, and Craig, I appreciated your thoughts and I'm on the Housing Committee as well. And we discussed it at length in the Housing Committee. And I've changed, changed my tune for sure because these, these are units that I think there's a lot of potential to create some, some housing at, at very advantageous locations around town. I mean, I, I suspect that office commercial space is, is going to become less and less in demand over time. And so to convert some of these to residential, it does make sense. And, you know, as we were talking about some of our other programs and, and, you know, with the, the balance of appreciation caps and, and, and rental caps. I, you know, I'm, I'm on board with this. I think, I think it makes sense. I personally would rather see it at a hundred, but I'm not going to fall on my sword on that one. This is going to be precedent setting, so I think we all need to really pick this out and make sure we're this, you know, I think each one of these, they, they are individual as their development agreements. But everybody's going to always bring up precedent, you know, as we did in this case. So I, I know we're not legally bound to follow the precedent, but each of these we do will set more precedent. No, I think, you know, these, these are probably good things. This one's a bit unique because it is in the historic district. But it does not add more square footage or it's not like we're increasing the footprint. So it adds more density just because of the code, but, but doesn't add more square footage. So I'm good.
Tridues over there.
Almost 500 a month for my four, four sixty or four seventy a month. So they're expensive.
Yeah. Great.
Does anyone else have anything, any questions or any conversation that they want to have?
I think I can just add to Dick's comments slightly in the fact that this really does further town council's goals and towns' goals of having workforce housing that's in the core of town where less boots and buy, or sorry, the other way around. More boots. And, and the affordability component for future renters, like this checks a lot of boxes. And I think we can use this example to encourage future, you know, spaces that are not, that are underutilized without adding additional density to the basin. And I just want to encourage the, you know, kind of the deed restriction light with a renting maximum component. And I think it's something that hopefully we'll see more of.
Jay, any, anything else?
It's nice getting locals back in town. So I think this adds to, piggybacks to what Jay was saying there. And I thought your kind of assessment of the pricing, that it would handle it through the cap rate with the rent was really astute and on point. So I think it's a great evolution here.
And you clarified with the cap, is that, that's the deed restriction light? So a renter would work in the county at least 30 hours?
Craig, do you want to add anything at this point?
I do. Craig Campbell, for the record. I know many of you. For those of you that don't know me, I've lived here 24 years. I almost built Steve's house. Mine was a builder for years, years ago. Over half of those years, I've lived in the town of Breckenridge. So I've, ironically, I didn't know you were doing BOSAC interviews, but I was also on BOSAC for two terms. Countywide Planning Commission, served with you. I was there for eight years. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Team Breck Ski Team, which you guys support graciously every year. So thank you for that. So I understand the issues. It's, it's, and I also don't intend to come off as not in my backyard, kind of a, a person. Cause I, I get the need. The irony is that I'm the one that's going to be living in this house. I, I invited Emily, my former wife and my two kids, Jackson and Victoria, because this all impacts them as well, especially my kids. My intent for this property is to keep it and give it to my kids so that one day they can have a foothold here. Cause we all know how difficult that is. If you were born and raised here like my kids, it's really hard to find a place and, and get a foothold. So that's the long-term goal. I would be a fool if I didn't work to protect the value of this property as best as I can. And that's why I was lobbying for 110%, I think of AMI for the rent cap. I think the question to consider, and I know precedent is important, but are all deed restrictions created equal? I mean, this is right in the core of town. It's, it's valuable. I, I, you'd be hard pressed to find a more valuable location for workforce housing. It's not out on Airport Road, likely no buses required, you know, if you live there. So I'm excited to live there from that perspective. Probably still drive to my office though, so. Horrible. Maybe I'll bike. Anyway, I wanted to just graciously thank you all. I know you have a lot on your plates. I appreciate the extra consideration, discussion and thoughtfulness on this deal. And, and I would just continue to push that question. Are all, are all workforce housing created equal? And I guess that's sort of the final point I would have to make. And thank you for considering it.
Craig, we have a great e-bike program. Oh, come on. More your car?
Well, okay, touche.
All right. All right. Do you want to start us off?
Bodie?
Are, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yes, I'm in support. Yes.
I was the next loudest voice in the room about having a, a hard cap on this property, mainly because of the precedent, but I think I'm, I'm persuaded again by listening to the overall picture, the fact that it's 110%. It is unique. And even though we are setting some precedent and that the deed restriction light versus heavy is an ongoing conversation. I'm in, in support of this development agreement. I vote yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes.
Yes.
And also yes. So you do have the 110% AMI, but we appreciate your negotiations with us and agree that it's a great unit and we're happy that it's workforce housing.
I would add too, I do intend to make nice improvements, new windows. I happen to know. I know a guy. So yeah, there will be, you know, benefits to that as well. I'll spend more money to make it nicer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you guys for doing a lot of the background work and getting this ready for us.
Thank you.
If you are good, we might try to do fireworks.
Yeah.
Conversation real quick.
All right. So we're going back one step. New Year's Eve fireworks discussion, and I believe this is Scott as well.
Sorry. So counsel, a few meetings back asked us to consider kind of New Year's fireworks, New Year's Eve fireworks, potential. A little bit of background of just from the memo that we, in 2019 was the last year that, that Breckenridge offered fireworks. And they were halted basically due to council concerns about traffic congestion. And when I said that in the memo, it's, it's largely focused on Fourth of July. That was the bigger concern. Is that Fourth of July congestion and emergency services, there were some real challenges with getting people across town during a fireworks show, if you will. So based on that, a little bit of that, I just want to flesh that a little bit. I think people impact on, impact on pets was also a consideration. So just want to give a little bit more kind of content.
And wildlife.
And, and wildlife, absolutely. And so in reviewing the proposal, basically. In reviewing the proposal basically, or you all suggested we take a look at it, we did not uh at all consider the Fourth of July fireworks, so. Uh that is not something that we as staff considered and didn't hear that at all from council that you wanted us to consider that, so we really just focused on New Year's Eve. Uh we worked with the ski area, uh we also coordinated um with Red White and Blue to kind of get their input on this as well. Um as you can see in this memo, we looked at a number of locations for the launch. Um launch is based on distance to residential structures, in terms of the height of your shells, let's say. So for every inch of of size of a shell is another hundred feet into the air, so a three-inch shell goes three hundred feet. Four-inch shell goes four hundred feet, so that's how that works, and so you don't want your shells to be. Any larger than the farthest distance or the closest distance to a residential structure, so in this case, we were looking at ten-inch shells as the maximum. So it's a thousand feet in the air, that would mean you'd need to have residential structures at least a thousand feet from that launch site. Okay, those are kind of the parameters on which we we evaluated this. Um huge credit to um to the ski area for engaging on this one and saying, hey, we can find a solution to this. Um and after looking at a number of sites uh in person and and kind of doing some analysis, um also credit to Brad LaRashell for his map work on this. Um to see if there are visual spots where it would be visible, that was the other question that we really looked at, is it worth it? Or if it's only a three-hundred-foot shell, but it's behind the hill and no one's going to see it, that doesn't really seem to to um reach the the goals as well. Um so ultimately, we came up with a locate- location that felt like it suited um all of the parameters that we had set for. Um that location is essentially. I don't know if I don't know what the appropriate name is of this of this location, but it's a it's a place between uh Sea Chair. And um the Super Connect, the base of the Super Connect-ish, there's an area there where the um I think it's Prospector Trail, Pioneer Trail. There you go, Peak Nine Storage Road, so it's it's a site that no longer has, used to have a lot of storage materials, if you've been through it on some of the trails, you may have seen it before. It's cleaned up, it has no storage stuff there, but that's the location. Um as you can see from the map, it is a long way, it's over a thousand feet from the nearest residential structure. Um we brought in um Western um. What do they call it? Sorry, Western uh Enterprises Fireworks, uh they are a a group of um enterprising ski patrollers that have. Learned how to use explosives through their job and then figured out a way to expand their offerings to fireworks. They do it all over the state, um a number of mountain towns. Um and for New Year's Eve specifically, believe the only other uh fireworks show in in the county, as we understand it, is on. Uh the mountain of Keystone, it's not the town, but on the actual ski area of Keystone. Uh but they do also do that uh fireworks show as well, so we coordinated that, had a number of meetings. Um brought in uh Public Works and Police Department for some of the uh nuts and bolts of how we would pull this thing off. Um and they're presenting it to you for consideration. Uh we did come up with a price, um this is um. I really just kind of narrowed it down to the the thirty-five-thousand-dollar number would include the ten-inch shells that we felt like were the maximum needed. Um and you can see there's also a map in here that shows you where the most visible locations are for those shells. Once again, credit to Public Works for having flown a drone to see if they could see, to verify how visible this was from various points in town. Um and we're able to, you know, basically confirm that this this um map is accurate, so. Question to you before y'all is if if you would like to consider this for New Year's Eve, twenty-four, twenty-five. If so, we would um work on contracting with um this group, um Western um Enterprises and then um. Obviously coordinate our efforts with the ski area, the Forest Service, Red White and Blue, and um other entities that might need to be involved for this discussion.
Thanks, Scott. Questions?
How high was the drone show the other night?
I don't know. No.
Not a thousand feet, I don't think.
And we, can you explain, like, why is traffic not such a concern? I mean, I sort of understand why there might be more cars on the road at Fourth of July, but like. Yeah, I don't, I just, is there, is there an explanation for why traffic is less of a concern?
Generally speaking, it's dark and cold and people are in their homes. Um also maybe windy, windy and snowing, uh so I think that's probably it, and in the summertime, if, you know, a lot more people are outside hoping to enjoy the show. Again, it's been since twenty nineteen, but they, a lot of the lots were full of people, right? And so people coming and going as well, but as soon as they depart, it became kind of congested as could be, and if you did have an emergency at that time, I think that was one of the biggest concerns.
We had a lot of like things, activations going on in town during the Fourth of July, like right through to the fireworks, you had the NRO concert. And then the fireworks right after, so it was just, it's a very different um.
We are just assuming people are going to stay, uh they're going to watch the fireworks and stay put, not, we are not.
They're probably, in most cases, are probably where they're going to be. During the fireworks, you may have some people that, you know, come down into town or go to various locations to watch them. They're also not, like, we were lighting fireworks off in the core of town, so it's, it is very different.
Matt Halsey texted me and said the laser show was four hundred. Um the other thing I would just mention is that what, as proposed, it was planned to be um right after the um torchlight parade. So the torchlight parade where people are watching, I mean, it would go straight into the fireworks.
That's usually what, six-ish?
No, no, it's nine, so it's nine to nine-ten, and then it's about. Yeah, so the kick, again, rough terms, it would be about nine-thirty would be the launch of fireworks, and it'd be about fifteen minutes.
Is that the same location they used to do it or similar to the old?
The the old location was at the um southeast corner of the reservoir, Salma Reservoir, the E C.
F and D, so it's not that far away, it's similar.
Yeah, but rules have definitely changed and become more.
No, I know, I'm more thinking from in-town and and viewing.
It's a similar spot in terms of viewing location.
Because I thought in the past, from a from a business standpoint, it 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 was fabulous. Because many, many of the businesses in town in the core of downtown, which is already full on New Year's Eve. Certainly at nine-thirty at night, um really got great viewing of it, and it was, it was really a nice. Amenity add-on to the to the guests that was here and um already in-town and and enjoying the. The restaurant retail community and so.
I think we wanted to be conservative with the mapping, um to not overpromise and underperform. Um I think just based on looking at the map, there's a good chance that many of the businesses will be able to view. The fireworks, but I don't, I just think um we didn't want to.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked, it it's a similar location, and in the past, you know, I think the viewing was was pretty good around town.
Have we talked to the county or any of our neighboring towns um advising that we were looking at this?
I let them know at the last um MMC meeting and they asked that, well. Other than, I think Dylan, who would still like to have fireworks on the Fourth of July, the others asked that we not do it.
Though no one else is planning on New Year's Eve fireworks.
Well, that's like Keystone is, right?
Keystone is scary, yeah. Keystone and possibly Dylan.
But that'll, that could split the county, I mean, that might be enough.
What are their primary concerns, were they voiced?
Um I think they didn't list any specific um concerns, just that, you know, we've made the move to. Not have fireworks for the most part, and they'd like to continue. Just not having fireworks and having that consistency across the county, with the exception of Keystone. And that, again, scary and not the town.
At that time of year, are the impacts to, I mean, I don't know much about fireworks impacts to wildlife, can you talk a little bit about that?
Um I guess the closest parallel I would say is that we, a lot of the focus that we have with regard to, let's say, Kukubur Gulch, her most sensitive wildlife area, is really. For the summer season, those are when when the wildlife are most active, and certainly songbirds, for example, are migrating, they're they're at the equator. So there's a lot less wildlife, if you will, um they're not in this area necessarily, there are certain exceptions, there are a lot of foxes. But certainly, a number of species are not even present during winter months, and so that, in that case alone, it would be less impacted, but. Beyond that, it's still going to be, it's still going to be loud and colorful.
Well, and they hear a lot of bombs every morning. So from a sounds impact standpoint.
So do we need more discussion, or are people ready to vote, or do you want staff to look at anything else before we vote?
I want to throw out just something to think about, and coming back to. Todd's discussion when we were talking about music. The fireworks, I would think, are not going to bring any more people to Breckenridge, you aren't already here. Right, so it's not like we're spending thirty-five thousand dollars to increase our bed base. And our revenue in town. And we previously didn't want to spend fifty thousand dollars to keep music coming into town. And that would have contributed to, you know, our destination. Plan of getting people to the town of Breckenridge. So I was, before Jay asked his question about what everybody else is thinking, and I was thinking. Who's going to help help us pay the thirty-five thousand dollars? You know, is anybody going to kick in on this if we're the ones who set it up and uh provide it to the county? In the area.
One thing that I will say, I'm not entirely sure that that is a. Accurate assessment of what's going on. What I've heard from business owners in town is that. A lot of people leave on in the evening, whether they go someplace for dinner and and the night show or whatever, but it really. Empties out, um because people do want to go see a show, and so I think there's quite a bit of missed revenue. In uh businesses in town on, you know, New Year's Eve weekend and.
Well, certainly Fourth of July, I mean, we heard that a lot at Fourth of July, any more going on? Hey, when you look at our lodging numbers, I think we need to to build. What's happening in Breckenridge more when people are here, whether whether it drives more business or not, does it drive the experience? Um I I the, I I don't think that the music that proposal is 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 apples to apples, it's um. Yeah, um that's a whole different animal for many reasons, I mean, we've tried that and. Um yeah, but uh I mean, it's good, good point, but I I I don't necessarily agree. I'm a believer that um we we need to. Um there's a lot of competition out there with other resort communities and we need to help our game.
And I would say the other side of that is it's a, it's a free event for every local citizen in the community.
And it's family event, you know, for hits are tourist and local.
The other, the only thing I would also respond to that is that. Um a little pushback in that it wouldn't bring more guests, because if our guests have a great experience. And with the fireworks added, they will be back next year versus going, oh, it's fine, uh maybe we should do New Year's in Park City or Steamboat or. Another one of our competitive set where if we can provide enough, you know, the easiest. Um way to keep and to maintain uh our market share is by not attracting new, but retaining our current. Uh vis- uh out-of-state visitors, and I think that this could be a uh a tool in the toolbox to to do that. Um I'm very appreciative of Peyton and the work that she put in on this as well. And uh if if this does turn into a positive vote, then I would like to give the town, surrounding towns in the county. Ample notice that that was our decision, and just in case we do need to coordinate a little bit with um emergency vehicles if. Traffic was, you know, I remember that one Fourth of July where we had gridlock, not that that would happen, but just having been prepared. For uh for emergencies.
Yeah, I like Dick's comment about upping our game, and I think maybe that's one day the healing center should shut, so.
All right, let's go ahead and vote, Steve?
Yes.
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 Great.
Okay. Do executive session?
Would like to do exec session, you'll need to um read the motion. And then we can do the roll call, um and then once we're headed into exec session, we have to move to the lower level, we'll have. Um the town attorney on Zoom. Um and then just as a reminder, when we come out of the exec session, we'll have to come back in here in open session to. Then close the work session.
I moved that the town.
Council, go into the executive session under CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes. Receiving legal advice pertaining to obligations under a contract between the town and N M W Golden to construct Uller Apartments.
Second.
Um um Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Town Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sade?
Yeah.
All right, I move that the town council go into the executive session under CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B relating to a conference with the town attorney regarding a complaint. Complaint filed by Colorado property owners for property versus town of Breckenridge, Colorado, based on the town's short-term regulations, rental regulations.
Second. Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Town Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard? Councilmember Page?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
All right.
Shannon, do you want us to get dinner so people can eat?
Are you ready? The time is now six twenty-eight and the executive session has been concluded. For the sake of transparency, the following occurred in executive session. All members, all council members, Shannon Haynes, Scott Reed. And Lori Bess were present for the receipt of legal advice to advise the town as to general contractor obligations under a contract between the town and M W Golden. To construct Uller Apartments. All council members, Shannon Haynes, Scott Reed, and Kirsten Crawford discussed in executive session litigation filed by Colorado property owners. For property versus town of Breckenridge, Colorado.
So Mayor, the one thing I'll add for the record is that Rick Coleman was also in the exec.
Oh, yeah, that guy. I knew I recognized you. Do we need to make the decision then?
So we do need to have council let staff know if you would like us to move forward with replacing the. Mechanical system at the Uller Apartments, which we believe will cost about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. After we have confirmed that we are in a position where we should be replacing the system, and just for the purposes of the. Um public, the system is currently not working, and it's a twenty-seven units rental project that we need to have. A working mechanical system in.
For having given notice.
Yeah.
To the other parties.
Yes.
Okay, um all in favor? I? Any nays?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, uh meeting adjourned. All right, seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, August thirteenth to order. We're going to start with roll call, please, Helen.
Marika Page?
Here.
Dick Carlton?
Here.
Steve Gerard?
Here.
Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckham?
Present.
Todd Rankin? Mayor Kelly Owens?
Here. All right, approval of the minutes for town council minutes, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Everyone okay? Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Shannon, any changes? All right. Communications to council. This is public comment, non-agenda items only. Three minute time limit, three minute time limit, please. Yeah, glad everyone's here listening. All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. On to, we have no continued business, so we're right into new business. Um, and we have a three resolutions tonight. We're going to start with resolution number fourteen, series twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving a first amendment to the third amended and restated intergovernmental agreement among Summit County, Colorado, and the towns of Breckenridge, Dillon, Frisco, Montezuma, Silverthorne and Keystone.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, you have before you a resolution that would amend the current I G A with the Summit Combined Housing Authority to add the town of Keystone um to charge them ninety-seven, or excuse me, ninety thousand dollars for the purchase of the office space that the housing authority is in currently. That um dollar amount was paid by um all the other primary members. The town of Montezuma did not pay into that, but they also get a very, very small percentage of revenue for housing. Um, and also changes the um sorry, blanking on the blanking on the word I want, but the contribution that all the towns make towards the administrative, excuse me, expenses of the housing authority now that we have Keystone added. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Shannon? All right, this is a resolution, so there's no public comment. Can I have a motion, please?
Move that we pass uh resolution number fourteen, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which Kelly read into the record.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between and between by and between the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County, Colorado, the town of Breckenridge and the town of Blue River. Duke?
Yep, this is the resolution to enter into that I G A for the Clyde though that we discussed in work session.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? For Duke? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we pass uh resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman? Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you. All right, number three, the resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the execution and recording of a density sunset covenant for the Stables Village workforce housing project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution in front of you will transfer density to the Stables Village project, which is under construction, and the density will originate on the F lot. So uh over sixty units of density will be extinguished on the F lot um to accomplish that. And this is pursuant to the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan policies in that document as well as town code regarding um density for workforce housing projects. One suggestion, um um if the council is inclined to make this motion is to um motion that um it's approved in the form as handed out this afternoon, as there were some minor modifications I shared with you this afternoon.
Thanks, Mark. Any final questions for Mark? All right, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we pass resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which has been read into the record. And as modified.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. All right, in other business, we have the Breckenridge Open Space Advisory Commission appointment, and we had um nine, I think, terrific applicants.
Well, you had.
Well, we had nine, but one was not available on the days that we needed them, so they changed. But um while we're handing out, I know that a couple of people just wanted to maybe give a little bit of background on how they arrived at their decision, so I would go ahead and throw it to Marika.
Um, thank you. I I think something I heard when I was campaigning for this position is that because members of Bosac tend to be heavily concentrated by living in the French Gulch area, that oftentimes there is a perception that a lot of attention is given to trails in French Gulch to possibly the expense of some other trails around town. And I think current sitting Bosac members are very sensitive to that. And I just want to make sure that the the new appointee is continues to be sensitive to that and aware of that, especially as we start talking about connectivity and how to bring parts of McCain in and other areas of town. I just want to make sure that they, the committee as a whole, can stay sensitive to the fact that they may not. We all use our, we all like to use our trails the way we like to use them, and we're very familiar with our local trails. And so I would just um encourage Bosac to make sure they're reaching out to those local neighborhoods to find out how trails are being used and what the connectivity needs are in different neighborhoods.
Anybody else want to say anything? All right, I would just say that I think we had a ton of really strong candidates, and we really appreciate people wanting to be involved in Bosac. And, you know, wish that all of these folks would continue for to look for places to be involved. Um, I know that one of the things that we do have to consider is the current makeup of Bosac and what maybe skill sets are needed right now. And so just because you might not receive this appointment, um you still might have the right skill set for next time. So hopefully people will continue to have interest either in Bosac or men of one of the many other commissions that we have. All right. Please pass your name to the wall.
I'm scurrying.
Said you two are doing open voting.
All right, um, so Matt Powers received four votes and Kelly Ahern received three. So your appointee would be Matt Powers.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, um. Now into other, let's see, nope, into planning matters, planning commission decisions. They were talking about the Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan. Any comments or questions? No, great. Yeah.
Do we have anyone to ask a question to?
No. I don't know. No. Oh, no, Mark's up there.
I guess I just want to confirm that there were no changes to the um that that is one hundred percent compliant to the development agreement. In all details and ways. Because it seemed.
Thanks, thanks, Dick, for that. Yeah, absolutely. It, the master plan is just carrying out the development agreement to a T. Jay may have even, he was in asking Chris a similar type question, I think, this after, um, today earlier. And uh carrying it forward. There was no deviations from that whatsoever.
Okay.
Yep.
I just, yeah, I saw that in there. I just wanted to reconfirm it.
Yep.
So, okay.
Point analysis, the plus two is the same exact point analysis that was in two thousand and three. And so this is just really, there's no changes in that. And um it's just adopting, allowing single family uh units in those areas.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Yes.
All right, report to the town manager and staff.
Um, just a couple of things, uh, we just wanted to let you know that they are going to be installing rain sensors at Larkspur. So something that we talked about, or you all talked about at the last meeting. Um, a reminder that we have a meet with the meetup with the mayor event for next Tuesday, the twentieth. Um, that's at Carter Park at four thirty, I believe. Is that, I think that's right. Um, and that's um a joint um meetup with Social Equity Commission, and they're going to do a hike afterwards. So anyone who wants to join that, please come. Um, and then just a reminder, next week, Thursday and Friday, August twenty-second and twenty-third, Carol, Steve and I will be in Durango for the cast meeting.
Great. Um, Shannon, will you also report out on M M C because I wasn't there?
Yes. Do you want to do another one?
Yeah, I'll start. I will start with, um, well, Breckenridge O- Open Space Advisory Committee.
We didn't have a meeting. We did have a fantastic turnout to uh the work on Ellie's features on Saturday. Uh, there was, not only was it the usual suspects, but there was a ton of families out there with kids, you know, doing the duffing, duffing? Am I right on that? Duff, yeah?
Duffing?
Whatever. Anyway, um, yes, so it it was, it was a great event, great weather. Um, and uh it looks like that trail's going to be uh ready to roll in about uh three to four weeks. Yeah. We actually.
Really roll? You make that joke on purpose?
Oh, a little bit. But actually, it was funny because we did see a to probably about a dozen people walking up the trail. And we asked if like the connection had been made, and it hasn't. People are bushwalking. They're they're so amped for this trail.
Yeah.
So I'm excited for it and glad that uh so many people were uh participating.
Cool. Um, Tourism Office.
Yeah, we met last week or a couple of weeks ago. Um, they got a clean audit, which is great. Had some discussions around goals. You know, four percentage increases, I think, where we landed, but we'll go into that in more detail when we have our joint meeting with those guys. Summer lodging nights, as I think you're all aware of, are down double digits and seem to be getting worse reservation wise. Um, and we talked about some of the intricacies around that because it it seems that for a while now, our our sales tax collections are better than than the um lodging numbers are. They're down, you know, like the the restaurant retail, you know, numbers are flatter, flatter up, and the lodging numbers are way down. And and Lucy brought up a great point. I mean, that's that's kind of a big red flag. You know, that means we're losing some of our destination guests that are being filled in with front range, day guests, you know, that kind of thing. And that's, you know, that's not necessarily our goal. You know, that's not sustainable. That brings a lot of congestion, a lot of traffic. You know, it kind of looks for discounting and such, so um, so it's something to really keep our eye on. You know, it's, it's not a sustained um trend at this point, but it's something to keep our eye on. So um, we got a presentation on the cast sentiment survey, which I think we already got here for council. So it was good for that group to to get that. Breck and Ski Resort, kind of to my previous points, having a good summer. You know, the report from from the rep with Ski Resort, their numbers are are strong. They were continuing to look at A I. That's a, that's a biggie for the B T O. You know, that's, A I's used quite, quite a bit in the travel world, so. Um, so Lucy's working on policy and ethical standards and you know, starting to create a committee around A I. So, good meeting.
Great.
But Matt did a great job as our new president. Vowder's president.
Um, Breck History?
We'll have a meeting in September.
Um, Breck Creative Arts, we had a discussion today. Do you have anything to add?
No, the Brek Creates people are going to be working over more general philosophical approaches to music in Breckenridge and what is sustainable for us and what best promotes our brand as far as providing that as part of the package.
Sounds good. Thanks, Steve. Um, C M L Advisory Board?
Our next meeting isn't till mid-September. Social Equity, meeting Monday.
All right, Arts and Cultural Master Plan Steering Committee?
I don't think we have anything to report. We uh, I think Tamara said it, uh, that we're just kind of inking the deal with Design Local and looking forward to engaging with them. It's gonna be a great process.
Great. All right, Shannon, M M C?
Um, so Eric gave an update on the R T A discussion. They're looking at a potential ballot initiative in November of twenty twenty-six. That's when the timing is best for that kind of question. Um, it would be a separate taxing authority for transit, maybe road improvements and and some things like that. Um, one thing that he did note is that it would give our area another vote on the I M T P R, which I think we've maybe talked about um with you is we're trying to get it to split so that we could have our own area, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen, although the vote on that has been pushed to November. The other thing that Eric Eric suggested, and and I need to talk a little bit more with him about this and with James about this, is potentially having one of you all attend some of those I M T I M T P R meetings. Because he really feels like having some electeds in the room could help sway things at times. So we can talk more about that. Interesting thing that was happening in Silverthorn, um, they are somehow, their power grid is somehow connected to Boulder. And so I think you probably saw in the paper, they were having those outages. Um, and I guess Salida was having those as well, and it's somehow tied to that um emergency shut off system. So when there's a fire, a risk of fire, their system shuts down so it doesn't spark a fire. Um, so Silverthorn is trying to work with Excel to figure out what is happening there and how they can ensure that they don't get shut off when there's something happening in the front range. It was really crazy. About instituting a fire ban, even though the the science for instituting it didn't say that they should. There was a lot of angst in the community around things were getting dry. Um, but we had a great conversation at the um meeting we have after M M C. And I think everybody came around to waiting a little bit, and then it it's been raining, so we're we're really good right now. Um, Keystone's going to have a valid question to D Bruce and impose a two percent lodging tax. So they're kind of coming along? Uh, I don't think it's, you can't opt out of Tabor, but D Bruceing is, oh heavens, I don't remember. Yeah, well, no, we'll, we'll get you what it is. It's, I'll search it.
It allows you to retain um funds instead of going back to the voters and having to disperse monies that go over the limit, the Tabor limits.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Save, save by voice above. Um, I don't know if we talked about this with you. Um, I don't know if we talked about this with you, but, um, at one point earlier in the year, the Town of Frisco had petitioned. The Dola, um. To raise the A M I threshold for Prop one twenty-three funds and they were denied and the reason for the denial was, uh, that our housing needs assessment. Has some faulty, um, evaluation techniques that were used in there, um, so. The county is now, um, meeting with Dola to try again to. Um, get them to listen to what's happening up here and they're bringing Root Policy, who did the housing needs assessment, to that meeting with them to defend their methodologies. Um, that, well, that hasn't impacted us because that, the funding is for. Um, rentals only and you can't, they don't have a for-sale grant program. Um, if the county can be successful, I think that'll help all of us and not having to do another housing needs assessment. Um, I think that's it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Um, any other matters?
I have one. I went to the backstage theaters, um. It's gonna be their gala and they, the Town of Breck was awarded the community. Community Partner Award this year, so. We were presented with that, but it was a great event, um. Just lots of community there. Um, they really have a strong board and. I really got a good sense, and I've been to the last three, this was the third and. Really have a good sense about where this backstage is, you know, cause three years ago. Um, they were really struggling and, um. They rebuilt the board and, and I have a strong board and, and funding, this was a big fundraiser and. You know, they were just, they were shy of their. Annual goal by like a hundred thousand, seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars and hoping to raise it that night and I, I think they did. Or if they didn't, they came very close, so, um. You know, I just, um. I'm an advocate for them, I, I think that's a great organization and. One that probably isn't getting the attention that, that maybe it should from, from us, so a plug for them. Funny event, though.
Great. Good for them. I love to see that success.
Jay brought this up earlier, but I'd love to see us, especially with that talented pool of, uh, folks that interviewed for OSAC today. Investigate possibly doing that bike pedestrian advisory committee to hopefully get us up to platinum. Uh, on that, uh, the bike friendly communities and, and again, just to kinda help, uh, yeah, help the town be better.
Get people involved.
That.
That's great. Anything else?
All right, I have one, um, the Breck Rec Center is done this week with their summer programs for the kids. And I'm not gonna name all the amazing people that they've had, um, on, you know, both in their staff and. They've done such a good job of recruiting, but Kevin and John. Huge kudos to the kids that you guys have, I mean, the programs are so fun, I've never heard better feedback than this year, I mean, it, it's always been great, but this year it seems like it's just been. Above and beyond and the number of kids that you guys are serving, I don't know, I think it's in the three hundred per week range and. Um, I mean, that just allows all the community to be at work and kids to have a great place to go and. Um, you know, that mental health of all those kids being outside and with each other and you guys are really contributing in a huge way to the community, so. And it's a ton of work. So I just wanted to make sure that we took a second to thank you and your team for getting that done.
I echo that, cause I hit the rec center a lot when those, those events.
They're always there.
When the madness is happening and, uh, it's just so awesome.
It's awesome.
Another kudos to Rec, um, both the Zambonis went out at the ice rink, I think at the same time and Dennis, uh, over at the rink was able to commandeer one from Frazier. Get it like on a tow truck in like twelve hours down here to keep operations cranking, so kudos to the, the crew over there.
Working hard, long hours. All right, anything else? Meeting adjourned.